Why I don't have the issues. Um, county commission also kind of wanted to see at least an answer on on the architectural side of things. Just so they know, like if the answer is, you know, we're not even going to recommend any of this stuff at all. At least they know that the answer is no on both fronts, no on the street regulating plan and no on the architectural. Um, so they're gonna ask me that question. We suspect that the planning commission would be okay with some of the architectural changes. Um, and we hinted at that to the county commission that we suspect you guys would be okay with it if this was kind of run on its own. Um, and so I think they're just kind of going, all right, what is it the planning commission wants? So let's make sure we get at least the styling the planning commission is asking for. And that's why I mentioned to you in the email that even though we've got some competing interests when it comes to costs or administrative effort on on deciding whether or not something applies. I do think the county commission wants to see a high degree of attractiveness.
And my guess is, my guess is if that particular project just evaporates more, that next project could probably likely ask for the same style anyway, since that style is pretty in the valley now. It's pretty prevalent with housing for sure, and already with commercial buildings. In one of the newer nicer new commercial building area, but also if you go around the whole west coast, the western intermountain region, that style is everywhere in every commercial setting, everywhere up in Truckee, there's even a hostel.
Yeah.
It's, you know, whether it's that project or another project, it's gonna be requested for sure.
I think you're right, and even if it's not thought about by a developer on the front end, when they come in and see that those, that's one of the few options that they have, they might shift and go in that direction. So they don't have to work on changing it. Having it available, I think is good.
And that's why my point in that, you know, in northern Utah, that almost every apartment project that I see everywhere, especially in Salt Lake, is in that style somewhere. And some of them are pretty not nice in my opinion, as far as quality of construction. When you stand next to it and look at it, you know, my son last year goes to the University of Utah. We were looking for an apartment for him in Salt Lake, so we looked at a whole bunch of places. Every one of them, newer ones are like that. And there's a range down there of quality of construction that you can tell when you stand there and look, look at them or go into them, you really can tell. And the ones that are cheap outsiders will achieve things there, but not necessarily cheap to rent. Interesting. Doesn't flow that way. I thought, wow, this building's, you know, you can tell it's a lower cost building to build, but it doesn't mean it costs less to live there, interestingly.
That's actually one of the points that we made with the county commission a little, maybe a year or two ago. Um, it doesn't really matter if we help a developer make their development be less extensive. They're going to be asking what the market rate is. That's just how.
Exactly what I saw in Salt Lake too. I mean amazingly, I was, I was surprised.
All we're really doing at that point is we're just either increasing or reducing their margins.
I think Janet is gonna be participating via Zoom.
I'm here.
Oh, you're there. Janet? Awesome.
So I got a call.
I'm here.
Jared Montgomery that was heading for the library, so it's not a library, that was for a September meeting. So he's, he's a few minutes behind. He's like, he's not 10 minutes late, but he will be here.
Great.
So they're gonna have to take me out. I'm pretty dirty and I'm like, oh.
We'll take you anyway. So, um, we do have a quorum. Um, we do have four people. So if we want to get started, we can. Janet, they're just getting situated, so we'll get started shortly.
All right, um, I'm having an issue with my camera. Not sure what's going on, but I'll try to fix it. Otherwise you might just get my name.
That's fine. Um, you can see the screen though?
I don't see a screen. Uh, no, let's see. Right now my screen has a Weber County scan me little captcha box, which just brought me.
That's it.
Okay. Okay. Well, I got that and it brought me to the agenda.
Good.
Yeah. Janet, what kind of pizza do you want me to eat for you?
Ah, I like a good pepperoni. If there's pepperoni and sausage, then that's even better.
All right, sounds good.
I'll eat it for you.
You're welcome. Really backed up. If anybody's coming from up there, for some reason there's a giant hole in the road. And we'll hold big backup.
Did you guys get much rain?
Yeah, we've gotten a bit. How about in your neck of the woods?
Uh, just the normal everyday. Just the normal South Florida everyday rain shower that happens for a good 10 minutes and then it stops.
Went back to the humidity?
Oh, oh, yes.
Well, Jeff, are you okay if we get started?
Okay.
Um, we got architecture standards on the agenda. We can start chatting a little bit about that and then the work session items, we'll dive into those later.
Um, so this one's on the agenda for a discussion decision, decision to be cabling. Wanted to be recommendation for denial, could be a recommendation for accrual. Um, you guys have seen this before. Uh, to my recollection, there aren't any changes between what you saw in your original meeting when this was held for a public hearing. And now, one of the reasons why a public hearing isn't required to be had upon this, again, we already had a public hearing. Um, this was sent to the county commission for, uh, with a recommendation for denial because, well, uh, I don't want to say because, I want you guys to fill that in if that was the case. But it was sent forward with a recommendation for denial as it was tied to a street regulating plan that maybe needed to be embedded a little bit further. Um, so county commission said, okay, let's separate those and let's see if the planning commission's comfortable with at least the architectural side of this proposal. This is an applicant, um, run proposal. Uh, however, staff have, we've actually got into the ordinance and made quite a few different changes based on different work sessions that we have with you guys. Those changes are mainly from what the applicant has requested and from what the current architecture standards are. Is right now the current architecture standard regulations based on area, Newton, Old Town, Eaton and Nordic. And, uh, what this is suggesting we do is not regulate necessarily each section based on area, but rather each section should be a particular architectural style. And then whatever planning commission asking for is a little bit more flexibility in each planning area on what architectural style might be allowed. And that's where you get the matrix of A for allowed, uh, no for not allowed. Um, and you can see we've got the matrix, we've got Eaton divided up into Old Town and Newtown. And then we've got Nordic Valley and then something that doesn't apply to talk about is the Westford River Village. Um, and then in Eaton, we've got a variety of allowances just depending on where you're located within Old Town or Newtown Eaton. And then Nordic Valley, um, the suggestion is we just keep it with modern Alpine as Nordic Valley has proposed and not allow other types of architecture in Nordic Valley. Other than that, all the other changes that I can see in here is just to make the the shift of going away from each of these sections pertaining to an area and moving towards each of these sections pertaining to a particular architectural style. Any questions about what you're seeing?
So is this the narrative change in blue or is this stay the same?
So everything that's being proposed in blue, uh, underline or red strikeout stays the same.
But it's only on these few pages.
Yes, you mean out of all the ordinance, the changes are exchanging. Yes.
So I sent, um, my thoughts on this, which are, I kind of wrote out in a bit of a narrative form, but also I took this ma- this matrix here and I modified it with in, in few areas to expand some of the styles and to adjust some of the styles. And I think I sent that to everyone. I think the matrix works personally. I think the style guide guidance generally works. I know it's what other places do. I think, um, there was room for expansion, meaning for example, Nordic, in the Nordic area, I think the style that the current developer requesting this ask for should be added to that area where they want, whether they want to use it or not, up to them. I think that style that the developer asked for is a, is a good style, exists in the valley. It's exists all over the west in new developments. It coincides with other western mountainish styles nicely from what I've seen in other places. So I personally would marked up that matrix in a way that I thought added more flexibility, but also added a little bit of separation, if you will, or definition between Old Town and Newtown. So for example, in the Newtown, I suggested that, um, the old west, the aguarian, aguarian, aguarian and, um, wouldn't be, um, allowable style in the Newtown area, but yes, in the Old Town area. So in every area, you would have multiple styles to choose. So did, did the other commissioners get a chance to see that markup of that? They just did a turn around?
I did. I mean, I looked at the email and looked at the markups, but I, I mean, I just, I can't say that I agree or disagree with them, but it's just, I guess it's a matter of personal preference or opinion.
I, I saw your email and read it thoroughly that, um, and I, I agreed with your points of the separation a little bit of between Old Town and Newtown um, and, and the markup that you did.
I've been taking the opportunity to in detail reread the general plan. I haven't made it all the way through, but I see lots of contradictions in there. Now we've got to preserve what's there. We've not got to, we've got to enhance what's there with things that are like what's there. We've got to be unique, not like other places. Um, but then we start talking about, we're going to define what new architecture can be built and it's going to fit within these, where we got five styles, mountain, modern and all this stuff. So we're not looking at what's there, we're saying it's got to look like this new thing and it's got to be uniform. I appreciate Commissioner Barber, you're mentioning, I think, my comment that we're stifling creativity if we have an matrix and, and you, I think differ with that, but the feeling I got in looking at this general plan, at least as far as I got was we've got something in there to make everybody happy. We're going to keep it like it is, but we're going to make sure it looks like this in the future and and it's got to be restricted that what the historic architectural character of the valley is pretty broad. It is. You, you can, there are a couple of pictures in the, uh, general plan in the introduction. There's one Blacksmith Shop, one of the old, um, general store. But those are pretty unique in the valley. I mean, there's one Blacksmith Shop and one general store. Leon's Market was a little bit like the general store, except it was made out of block instead of wood. But we're picking a couple of hundreds and saying now everything's got to look like these couple of things.
I think that's what the matrix says no to. I says, I think I look at this matrix and certainly the way I marked it up gives a range of of options for each area for, so Old Town, for example, Mountain Rustic, I believe, and, uh, Remains available. Now those 1800s period buildings that you mentioned, the Blacksmith Shop and and General Store, I mean, Mountain Rustic is a deviation from that, I believe. So I think a developer going in there would have plenty of range to work with. I don't think a modernistic building necessarily would, uh, flow well right next to the, a few older 1800s buildings. And it's, if you're going to try to have some direction here, I would say that the Mountain Rustic fits in there and adds range as this matrix allows. I would say that, um, in the Newtown area, having, um, three choices in there and certainly between Mountain Modern and Mountain Alpine, there's a wide range in there. Mountain Alpine, which right now this says no, but that's what y'all approved for Nordic. I think that's a pretty wide ranging style as I see it all over the place. Uh, it's been around for a long time. It'll continue to be around and how you build it and how you manipulate it in a mixed use or commercial setting is a lot of flexibility there. So I don't, I don't see it, um, this matrix approach providing limitations, but I see it preserving what exists in the valley. And no one's going to come into this valley other than pointing at a couple of buildings and say, wow, the architecture here is amazing. Over the years, people have really focused on architecture. I don't think that's the case. I think this valley is pretty developed, doesn't have a lot of old architecture scattered around. It has a little bit here and there and they're mostly, you know, old kind of dilapidated buildings, to be honest. And somebody did fix up the Blacksmith Building and now they're building a brand new building behind it in the same style, which is great. That's all going to flow together nicely. But had that person not done that and just knocked it down, because it would have been cheaper, you know, then we'd be having probably maybe a different discussion. But they decided to preserve it. That's great. And, and that, I think, look and feel there can carry on in that area quite nicely with some other options for other developers that want to come in. But that general store building, yeah, you know, my guess is that building isn't going to be there forever because that building is not the same as the, as the Blacksmith Structures. And so that corner someday will probably be too valuable for that kind of a building sitting there. And so when they go to rebuild it, having a little bit of flexibility, but yet keeping it in the same, you know, older 1800-ish, older mountain look is probably reasonable to hope for.
I guess my problem. One major contradiction with the general plan is is not to focus on rural, you're going to be rural. Well, rural doesn't have architectural standards. Rural is forever, just whatever somebody wants to put out. And I got thinking, this is kind of, in a way, it's like, okay. I don't like your shirt. I don't like shirts with press and iron, okay? And you reply, well, it's none of your business what I wear. You buy it on my body and I'm putting a shirt on. Well, you expand that to, to land. You want to be good on my land. No, I don't like that. I don't like that. Didn't fit in the matrix that I like. And then that is really what I'm talking about is all subjective, all this stuff is subjective.
So in your opinion, the matrix would have an A on everything?
Yeah. I mean, taken to its full extent, I'd say, oh, wait a minute. What are we talking about figuring out with imposing our likes and dislikes that are totally subjective on people that own land that's going to be there for hundreds of years? Okay, uh, Mountain Modern is great today, I guess, but in 10 years it'll be something else. And people will be taking these shed roofs and they're going to be turning them into something else because, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yucky. So why get in the business of deciding fashion for other people who own the property?
So what about that pirate themed restaurant, that little log?
Every time I drive by, Commissioner Barber doesn't like.
Well, you know, it was built and the guy who built it, Pat Shack, it's called. And it's, yeah, it was nicer than a shack, but it's probably the cheapest you can build a building around there. Now it even looks worse. And was so what if somebody down the street wants to build, you know, something, um, in that, in that direction? Now, is, is that okay, no matter what it looks like? Cause they like it, they own their property, they can just build whatever they want. Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind that pirate thing.
So I don't think, I think.
Pirate thing doesn't hurt me. It doesn't affect my health, safety or welfare.
Yeah, I don't think bad outlook is inconsistent, is consistent with the, uh, the valley plan. I think I read the valley, uh, Ogden Valley Plan to say that looks matter. You have to take into account, you know, what's there that fits with the valley. The rural, I, I read to say that we should, if we're going forward, the guidance should be in a more in a setting with materials and looks that fit with the area. So when you say rural, now steel, shiny steel and glass are not rural, but stone, embers, uh, wood siding, um, that's rural. How you configure it in shape and form, that has some variability, but it, the materials kind of fit in that rural outlook. And so that's how I read it is that, is that looks matter. Take into account what's there, where the valleys come from. And then build on it with, you know, using natural or, or more rustic materials and guidance, point quote. That's how I would be. And that's how I think the county commission would like to see this go if that matters what the way your commission will ultimately make a decision. I don't think they'll decide, say, whatever, you want to build a, you know, a steel and glass structure, uh, or you want to build a dome or something shiny right next to Pat Shack or the Pirate. I don't think that'll fly, but I, I do think guidance within a range of more typical structures that you find in these kind of communities, taking into account the older shell buildings, I think that will fly. And I think that's what they want to see. I personally, I think that's what the community wants.
Commissioners have already made it clear and I, I think Jeff, I think you were in that meeting and Trevor was in that meeting that the architectural standards are, are gonna be here, but they're open to what they are. Um, but they do want architectural standards.
Well, the elected people, and that's the people don't like having more architectural standards. So fire them and get somebody else, is what I'm saying.
Well, so Commissioner Burton, I understand what you're saying and we aren't the final body decision. I mean, we're making recommendations, but, uh, but that is the part of the planning commission. I mean, when you, when you kind of mention, uh, who are we to put our taste or fashion? Well, we're on the planning commission. So, uh, just as much as we get to discuss what size sign or entrance, you know, signage someone can have, this goes with that too. I think, I think the matrix and specifically, I, I do agree with the matrix that Commissioner Barber had sent over with a couple of edits, uh, that he'd made. But I, I think that it offers a variety. Um, you know, there, there are options within these options, you know, Mountain Modern isn't one building only. It's, it's whatever you conceive of within this parameter. And so I don't think you're going to get cookie cutter. I think that, um, things are going to flow well. And, and that's part of the job of being on the planning is that you, you have to plan for what's going to come down the future. So.
This is the current, right? Yes, and, and this is applicant driven. Where does he use this at? Right now it's just rural residential. That's actually a question I just found out.
I asked the question, it was brought up for Eaton Prosser.
Yeah, it was brought up for Eaton Prosser. Um, as we look at where the planning commission has asked for this discussion to go, uh, as well as the county commission, it's adding more diversity than just what the current code says. Um, something that will prevail even if the applicant's request doesn't, doesn't get a parental example. Yeah. So you're right, the applicant's looking, it's just residential, uh, so it would apply to the rest of. So I think that it's exciting for other people, applicants. Yeah.
And I think like we said before, the point of this is if, if some other applicant in the future, whether that be next week or in 10 years, has a different or better idea, they can come and do the same.
That's what I mean, for that to be better off, for the applicant to have a piece that's going to be, you're going to build something better. Somebody, I mean, it might be, but. Yeah, the applicant's original request was, uh, just to take a look at their property. Um, as we were first discussing it, just, will this work on their property? But then as we got discussing it a little bit more, you know what, maybe it should be an option available in all of Newtown Eaton. Um, as we were discussing this as the planning commission and staff, um, what I heard, where I heard the discussion, what I heard about them all is a request for more flexibility for anyone who's in this zone, uh, based on, uh, location. So if we vote on this, we want a body town, we want to see it's the street lighting. So it's kind of been, I won't use, use the word hijack, it's kind of been going in a different direction than what the applicant originally requested, uh, because the planning commission would like to see a little bit more flexibility for other people.
So I've heard discussions that this only applies to commercial.
Mixed use too, right?
Yeah, yeah. Anything that's mixed use, uh, commercial, it'll also apply to multifamily buildings, but it doesn't apply to two family or single family.
We need to go in. Page nine says it's going to be a simple event.
I like your shirt. It looks nice.
That's like me, my cleanest nerdy shirt.
Hey, gentlemen, so that I don't interrupt anybody, because I won't really know when someone's about to speak or not in the meeting. Is it good if I raise my hand, um, or if no one's going to pay attention, I'll just kind of pipe in and speak?
Yeah, I would just say it's probably easier just to speak. Everybody's pretty much left this room, but.
All right. Well, don't take offense if I step on anyone's, uh, toes.
No, I just.
No, I just.
Okay, it looks like we're at five o'clock. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like you to welcome to, you to the, uh. Meeting of the Ogden Valley Planning Commission. Let's call it mission, meeting to order, and if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance. If we're a roll call. I note that we have Commissioner Montgomery, Commissioner Tormann, Commissioner Barber. And Commissioner Burton and Commissioner Womner is joining us on. Zoom. Commissioner Schuman, Chair Schuman is not here tonight and Commissioner Johnson is also not here. Okay, we have. Had sent out to us. Minutes for the June 27th, 2023. Meeting. And has anybody got any comments on those meetings that you haven't submitted on those minutes? Hearing none, uh, those minutes will stand as approved. There any conflicts of interest, ex parte communications that need to be declared for tonight's agenda? I hear none. The, um. First item on our. Agenda tonight is a legislative item. It's. ZTA 2023-03.1, a request for reconsideration. Of an amendment to the Form Based Zone to insert additional architectural styles. And enable various combinations of architectural styles within village areas. That would be Planner. Uh, Charlie Ewer, would you like to? Lead us through that, please?
Yeah, thank you, planning commissioners. I don't intend on, uh, giving a, a large presentation on this. You guys have, um, reviewed it before, looked over it. Not any changes between what you've seen before and now, except for one that I just barely noticed, and that is that, um, what you're seeing on the screen. In terms of the As and the Ends is a little bit different, um, uh, symbology than what we used in the, um, table before. So we're just, the As and the Ends are more consistent with. Uh, what, um, we've been doing in other chapters, for example, like the agritourism chapter. So with that in mind, just a very brief overview of this, uh, this is a request that was brought to you back, I believe it's in June, uh, to, um. Uh, amendment to the Form Based Zone to, uh, amend architectural styling, um, standards for, uh, various areas, uh, within the Ogden Valley. Um, pertaining to especially the, uh, commercial areas and the potential mixed use, uh, and multifamily areas in the future. Um, under the Form Based Zone. Uh, one of the things that was included in the original request was a request to, to modify the street regulating plan of Newtown Eden area. Um, the, uh, planning commission's, uh, previous action on this was to recommend denial of the package deal. It went to the county commission. The county commission said, is there any reason to think that the planning commission wouldn't? Be, uh, view favorably on just the architectural standards being changed? And so we're back here asking you guys that question. We suspected that maybe architecture was generally okay. Um, to, to, uh, work through on this, um, and so the county commission wanted to separate the two issues and. Ask this question, uh, first, just to see if you guys are, uh, okay with moving forward on making modifications here. Um, having a, a few different, uh, offline discussions with, uh, different planning commissioners, um. There are a number of different ways that we could go with architectural styling. Um, you guys know, I mean, sky's the limit. It's just a matter of whether or not we write it and, and write it creatively. Creatively that in a way that, uh, works for, um, the maximum amount of people. While also staying true to the community character and what the community wants for the fu- uh, future. What these modifications will do, uh, the current Form Based Code regulates architecture based off of Old Town Eden, uh, Newtown Eden and Nordic. And if we extend the Form Based Code to other village areas that the general plan identifies, for example, Liberty or Wolf Creek or other areas. Um, if we continue down the vein that our current code is on, we would have architectural standards specific to each of those areas. Uh, as we discussed this in work session with you, the planning commission, you, you guys mentioned, it'd be nice to have a little bit more flexibility in each of those areas. So rather than regulating a very specific style of architecture per area. Maybe each style of architecture can have its place, um, in each area or in, uh, various different areas. And so the table that you see in front of you, um, was born out of that. And each section that were previously the styles for Old Town, Newtown and Nordic have been changed to be. Art, specific to architectural styling. So instead of Old Town Eden, now it says Old West Style. Instead of Newtown Eden, now it says, um, uh, Agrarian. Instead of Nordic, it says Modern Alpine. And then in keeping with the applicant's original request, the applicant's original request was to include Mountain Modern in Newtown Eden area. And then, uh, through the work sessions with the planning commission, I heard the planning commission say, it would also be nice if we had a mountain rustic option in some of these areas as well. So I took that information back, uh, uh, I rebuilt the, uh, the matrix that you see here and brought it back to you guys in a public hearing in, in your June meeting. Um, at which time I believe it was the street regulating plan that kind of hung the thing up and, and, uh, you guys recommended denial on that. So now we're back, uh, just asking these specific questions. In red, uh, the red As and Ends that are here, um, Commissioner Barber had some specific, uh, uh, requests that he sent out by email. Um, I believe he copied everyone on that. If we were to go with Commissioner Barber's desired changes, um, it would be the, the red letters instead of what's in blue in those specific, uh, boxes there. Um, that's up for you guys to decide on whether or not you want to move forward with that. Or, uh, or go in a different direction in tonight's meeting. Um, you guys are more than welcome to table the item and ask for a little bit more research or more, um. Uh, effort, uh, in, in creating styling or in reducing styling if you want that, um, or you can, uh, recommend, uh, approval, or you could recommend denial to the county commission. Just based on what you guys desire to do today. Any questions about the proposal or? How to proceed?
Uh, Director Grover, I fail to have you introduce the item and tell us. What we should, what our responsibilities are with regard to this item. Oh, the only thing you need to, um. Realize is that we already had a public hearing on this item, so there's no public hearing that is required. Um, it's just up for you guys to deliberate, um, on. So that's the only thing.
Okay, thank you. It is legislative, so you got wide discretion on what, uh, what you can and cannot do on this. You can. Uh, there's a pretty wide open door on, uh, how we proceed.
Once we set this in stone, if it gets approved, how hard is it to get an added? If the new applicant wants to come in and say, hey, I'd like to do this.
Uh, uh, as hard as you see here. So we have to have at least one public hearing. We'll probably have at least one work session just to make sure the planning commission understands it. Uh, before it goes to public hearing, um, and then after that it goes to the county commission for final decision. And so as long as everything lines up positively, um, it might be a couple of months.
It's possible for new ideas to come.
It is. Yeah. In fact, um, this matrix could expand quite a bit if we, uh, if we want it to, and if applicants and, uh, uh, builders or developers requested it. Um, obviously they'd have to be in the Form Based Zone in order to get the benefit of it. Uh, so a lot of people would have to rezone first. We currently only have essentially Nordic and then two other parcels in the Form Based Zone.
Okay, and this is an applicant driven?
It is. Yeah. It started out applicant driven. Um, I believe the applicant still, uh, is in favor with the general direction it's going. The applicant is actually here if you wanna. Listen to the, uh, applicant, um, their comments on it. Um, but it has been amended and kind of expanded by the planning commission in terms of, um, how do we, uh? Uh, give more options to other landowners? If you'd like to listen to the applicants.
Yeah, I think we, we'd invite the applicant to come forward and. Explain your thoughts on all the changes that have taken place over.
All right, Eric Household with the Household Group, thank you. Um, just a couple of comments as I listened to the pre-meeting. Um, I think it's important we go back to what we were originally asking for. So essentially we came in. To amend the Form Based Plan and, uh, in terms of architecture, we wanted to provide. Another option for new meeting. Um, we believe it's consistent with existing buildings that are there. And you know, we're not asking. To change the other areas like Old Eden. Or Nordic. Again, we're just focusing on that. New Eden area. But we're trying to get some direction so we can move forward the design for Eden Crossing, that rezone, so we can propose that to you guys. So. Those are kind of my comments, but I didn't know if you had any questions directly from me.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair notes that the chair has arrived.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late. Yeah, I apologize. So where, where are we at?
First item.
Okay.
The presenter is Mr. Ewer. He's. Made a presentation and the applicant has just made some comments.
Any other questions for me? Um, do you want me to start over?
No, I had a question though for the. Um. Well. Actually, I think we're good that way. So we have discussion, have we had the public hearing yet, right?
We had it previous.
We already had the public hearing on this in the previous meeting.
Even with the legislative revisit, we're not gonna do it again?
No.
Okay. Alright.
It sounded, it sounded like we have that option if we want it, but.
If we're gonna call it a public hearing, we'd have to notice for it.
Yeah, there's been no notice.
Okay, I apologize.
Um. Do we have any comments? Any questions?
So I, um. Since I submitted. Maybe. The most initial comments, I'll start out by saying that, uh. Taking it down to the, to the basic level, I do support the applicant's. Quest for that new style to be added. I think it's. Relevant. That style exists throughout the valley and residential building. It does exist in that area already in a commercial structure. I think it's. It's a well-accepted, um, style in western mountain communities all over. And it's, you know, it's, it's a bit of a, a recent trend over the last 15 years, but it's. That style has existed for a very long time. It's. No one recently invented, invented shed roofs and. And, um. Columns and the style that that actually is come these days. So I, I do support that style by itself. I also support, uh, Charlie's with the matrix. I think it. In a way simplifies things, but it also adds. Guidance for the future and expands and easily shows the various ranges of. Architectural style. Available to a developer who might come forward into the future. I don't think, I know not everyone will. Like every architectural style. I know I don't. I don't like, you know, I like some of these more than others personally, but I don't think that matters. I think what matters is that you're. Allowing. Uh, future development to exist within a set of guidelines. But at the same time, as all, as was. Already said, if somebody has a different approach in the future, they can bring that forward and just like this process. Have it approved or not, if it makes sense. I think some of the adjustments that I suggested. This matrix and that I will move eventually here for approval. Um, does, they all coincide with the Ogden Valley General Plan? I think the plan does have language in there that gives this matrix credence. Uh, I think if you look at Old Town, for example, right now, there's a new, a new commercial building being built that fits. Within this matrix. I think the most recent. Other than the gas station and credit union, the most recent or more, most significant. Building that's built in the Newtown area does fit within this matrix. The proposal from the developer fits within this matrix. Um, it gives Nordic if they want it or not. Uh, some additional flexibility as they go forward. I'm sure in phases, they're not gonna do it all at once, and I'm sure as they go forward, they might want to add some. Architectural looks and this gives them the ability to do that. I think it adjusts a little bit to take some of the. Uh, without, I'll just call lower cost type options. Off the matrix, although if they. Somebody wanted to do that, they certainly could come back and ask for it. Nothing would prevent that and it could be approved. Uh, my outlook is that the applicant, um. The quest is a good one. And that taking it to the matrix adds uniformity and this matrix. Marked up, I do believe coincides with the Ogden Valley General Plan, and I think it coincides from what I can gather with what the county commission. Wants to see in the valley.
Commissioner Barber and I have differing views on this and, and that's good. Um. I believe this is a place that government should not be going, and that's imposing. Someone's subjective views on what subjective likes and dislikes. To what a private landowner can do on his own land that he owns. It's. I believe it stifles creativity. It's certainly not consistent with the idea of rural. Rural that I observe is people. Coming up with all kinds of different styles. It's rural, unregulated. It's not a downtown planned community or a. Theme village. It's rural. The general plan emphasizes rural and. Creating a matrix with some subjective architectural styles, allowing some, but. Uh, prohibiting others is not consistent in my mind with rural. Rural is certainly not uniformative, uni-. My word. It is not a uniform. Uh. Matrix causes create uniformity. I've spoken about this before. I'm, I just don't think government should go here. It's not. Part of health, safety and welfare that the community and government ought to be concerned about. It's. Individual subjective likes and dislikes and imposing those on neighbors.
Thank you. I, um. I have a couple of thoughts with that, that. Separate between, between the two is that. I have a couple of thoughts with that that separate between between the two is that uh with this with this this matrix and the idea of regulating what buildings should look like. Um in this scenario, what we're saying is if you want this zone, this is what it should were what is generally accepted. Um and not saying that this has to look that way in this area. That's saying if you are wanting to do this zone, which does have some some oh some things that you can and can't do, right? Uh transferable development rights. Um you can have higher density units, and that's where we're saying, hey, if you want to go this, this is how a general idea of this this forum base would look, and that that's what ties this together. So if you didn't have a uniformity in it uh as you create a community, you you would you would have certain certain you know, landowners would spend the extra time because to do to do a development, do a building or a type that is more appealing and others that would not. And so what what I think this generally promotes is a uniformity in in design types, and that's what I think we should be shooting for. Um uh is that, hey, look, we we, you know, we want a barn-type architecture. Well, a wooden-sided barn is different than a metal-sided barn. There's different appeals to that, and I think that generally we should be able to uh that there should be some uniformity while we keep it as open as possible, right? If we can try for a uniformity in you know, we we don't want the 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 least cost option always uh there when we're trying to encourage the higher design standards. So I think there's a balance, but I and I I I would somewhat disagree that it takes away because you can use a different zone. If you, you know, if you're dead set on building something that's not in that, you can do a different zone, albeit you wouldn't have the same benefits that are found in the form-based zone. So uh it's it's definitely a difficult, difficult thing to look at. Generally, I think that we should have a uniform, and I think we we've opened it up with this matrix. And whether whether I like or dislike what some things proposed is not, I don't think a good argument. It's it's mostly doesn't fit with the the design in a general form is how we should do it.
You know, I I agree with that, and and I think we, and I I try to make care of it. Yeah, general plan in that, for example, rural is great. But unfortunately, we throw rural out when we talk about transferring to the development rights into a very small concentrated areas. I think the general plan wants to keep a little flavor. They're pretty much do keep a real flavor to the areas. But we can't say, no one can honestly truly say that then the Old Town and Newtown area going forward, ten years from now, when the density for event uh development rights kicks in, are going to be, those are not. Those are gonna be dense areas with roundabouts and traffic and big parking areas and lots of people, and that's what the Ogden General Plan says. Unfortunately, the words rural get mixed in with that in these form-based villages. And the two are different. Yeah, the value hopefully obviously character and flavor and areas, but these form-based villages by design and by what the county commission wants are not, in my opinion, going to be rural areas anymore. And so having this matrix providing a framework for guidance with flexibility, of course. I think really if that's not done, then you end up with chaos. And that's not, I don't think, I don't think that's what the community.
Well, I just point out that i- if a landlord, i- if a landowner does on his property what pleases him but doesn't please his neighbor is a proper for government to come along and say, hey, your neighbor doesn't like this. You can't do it even though you do because he was here first. Didn't make any sense to me. I- if you own it, you get, I use the example of clothing, you know, I pick on. I assure, I don't like that shirt. You can't wear that. I gotta use government to say you can't wear that shirt when you're around me. Well, that's silly. So why is government saying, uh yeah, you own this land and you've had your dreams, but sorry, I've decided I don't like your dream, so you can't do it. So slippery slope, I don't think that's where government ought to be pushing people around as on what their buildings look like. Safe building, okay. Yeah, that's safety, but looks. So I I reject the idea of a a matrix.
Uh I'm gonna pipe in. I'm in favor of the matrix with the Commissioner Barber's adjustments. I think it adds diversity uh and makes a separation between the Old Town and the in the New Town with his adjustments. Um I think that more options are good and that uh I also agree with Commissioner um or our chairman that uh that, you know, there are some concessions when you're when you're asking for a zone change because there are certain benefits you're looking for. They they can do this without the zone change, but they, you know, if they want the zone change to be able to do transfer development rights or whatnot. Uh the whole point of the form-based legislation that I remember when it was first being adopted was it was going to streamline things by creating architectural standards, um street standards, all this other stuff that that just laid out ahead of time what would be expected. Uh and in that realm, this matrix gives plentiful options.
Thank you. Guess uh entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we matrix that was shown in red.
Would you clarify, please?
Those were shown. What, Charlie, could you put those back on the screen, please?
And I'm sorry, Commissioner Barber, can you speak into your microphone? I didn't hear all of your motion.
I I would motion that we accept legislative item ZTA two zero two three dash zero three point one as written with the adjustments that are now showing on the screen in red to the matrix.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. That's Commissioner Wamper.
Is there any discussion on the motion? We have a second. Okay, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
I'm a no.
I'm a no. No.
So that fails. Oh. Yeah, well, sorry.
I I I would be in favor. Motion.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself.
So it would tie, so we have to redo it. Um or re relook at this, so.
Which means, excuse me, the motion fails, and so there needs to be a new motion of some sort.
Thank you for clarifying. Yes, a tie is, so we have three, four, three against. Uh the motion fails, and we will need to redis re re-motion, so. Shall we have some more discussion?
I would. Sorry, I would love to hear from uh Commissioner Torman and Montgomery. Uh I think I understand Commissioner Burton's perspective. I'd like to hear from the other two, though.
Yeah, so mine, this is an applicant-driven. Um if I open up the street regulating plan, we have the applicant's not in this zone, and it's not in the commercial use yet, maybe it will be. And so he's kind of making decisions for other areas. Well, I would, I feel like we should see how the street regulating plan goes and then vote, have an applicant-driven. If we switch it to a county-driven, that could be different.
It's a good point.
I can, if I were to bet, I would bet one hundred percent the county commission will approve that street regulating plan exactly as the applicant requested. So they, I watched their work session twice. And it was informative for me for a lot of reasons. I don't necessarily think we wasted our time when we entertained all that, um but how it was presented to them was different. And I took away immediately that they are going to maybe they have, I don't know. They're going to, in my opinion, based on watching that, approve that street reg regulating plan. It's not going to come back to this commission. So they pretty quickly saw that the having the two items together was a hangup for this this commission, and I agree with that. And so now we have this one back here. But I really don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, that that other, the street reg regulating plan by itself is going to come back here. Is that?
I don't know for certain on that at the present time.
But my assumption is even if it did, and we voted no again, it's going to go through that that commission, I believe, having watched their work session and listened carefully to the questions and the dialogue back and forth. And and the reality is it was presented to them a little different than it was presented here. And there were some different um graphics used. And if the two were separated and brought back to us, I don't know how it would it would go, but I feel that the county commission will approve that request.
So but the but the other commissioner, you were saying, I'm sorry, I didn't know who was speaking, but the other commissioner, you were saying it's more of a procedure that you're uh objecting to um right, is that that it was applicant-driven, but the applicant, we haven't seen the proposal, he's not in that zone, and so therefore on that basis alone, it's kind of a procedural decision?
Right, it's not. I mean, at what point is the applicant until it's zoned so that you he can do these things? We're just making decisions for other areas that are zoned without an applicant-driven.
I can see, I can see that point.
Commissioner Wamper, this is Commissioner Torman. Um my my observation of this is that we already have a street regulating plan. We already have design standards for Newtown Eden, Old Town Eden, all these other areas. And it just seems like they're all getting changed all the time when we have a plan in place. We don't have an approved subdivision or an approved approved project for this location yet, so my observation is that we're changing things before they should be changed in a different order in which they should be approved or denied. So that is why I voted no.
Understood. Uh and and Charlie, if I'm if I can be a little bit crass, but uh am I understanding correctly that this was applicant-driven? But it was different when the applicant suggested it, and then you, for lack of a better word, hijacked it and decided to broaden it. Is that a fair assessment?
Uh if you said me, as in Charlie did that, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna own that. But the planning commission did ask for changes, yes.
So Charlie, what what, so I know this got more broad from the applicant's request. Where does the hangup between what's currently in the zone, in the form base that we have already done versus I guess, so the whole matrix is a whole new thing. It's a whole change that kind of gives some flexibility as compared to Old Town is this, Newtown is this.
Right.
And um so I can, in a lot of ways, it is a pretty big adjustment for everything as composed to that. So I I see your the point Commissioner Montgomery made pretty pretty strongly there. That is a big adjustment for that.
Yeah, or an applicant that's not in the zone that we're changing. I mean, he might be, and we can look at it, but I feel like we're ahead of it.
Charlie, can I ask why?
Applicant, if the applicant owns land there right now, and if they wanted to proceed just using the existing street regulating plan as is, they could do their project. It just would be different than they want to do. Is that right?
That's right.
They're there.
Yeah, they are there. The the street regulating plan puts um some large lot residential on the property that they currently have. And so these standards wouldn't apply to them because single-family residential doesn't have to follow these. Um but yeah, they would be essentially in the zone, and then um at that point, if they were to come back in later and change the street regulated plan, then if this got adopted, it'd be available to them. They wouldn't have to make more changes later.
It's kind of an interesting dynamic. We don't wanna, we don't wanna stifle creativity, but if we don't change it, we're stifling creativity.
Well, we're we're making recommendations and observations to the county commission, who ultimately decides these things. And and the message I would like to send to them is don't don't re make things so restrictive. Open them up. But applicants be creative and do things. Don't restrict them to certain divine defined, popular at the moment styles, and do all kinds of styles here. That's that's the message I'd like to send them.
I think if you, I think that message can be sent, that I think reality exists all over the West in in existing and emerging and changing communities like we're talking. Where you end up seeing strip mall-like things, and you end up seeing developers spend as little money as they possibly can get away with. That's what you like, great. My sense is that's not what the county county commission wants. And that's not what the community wants. And I think when you go into this new form-based village, high-density transfer of development rights mode, you have to look at things. You have to step back and look at things differently. And I think that's where having a matrix and a framework or guidance makes sense. And that if it scares away a developer who wants to just spend as little as they can, get away with, that's fine. It's their choice. And if it adds some opportunity for thought, where a developer wants to expand it and come back and ask for a different design genre, that's great too. I think nothing here sets anything in absolute, there's no absolutes here at all. It just gives guidance. And it's it's for new, it's for a new adventure in the valley. These form-based zones don't exist really, and now they're going to. And now you have to look at things differently, and I think you can take cues from other places in other similar communities where guidance always exists now in development. I don't think there are any totally non-rural, non-wide-open places anymore in the western mountain communities where you can just come and build anything you want. I don't think that exists anymore for good reason. I think that's what the county commission wants here is good reason.
I can't impute to the county commission what they want or do not want. They represent the the community. They represent the landowners. I I hesitate to impute evil intent of a developer to wanna save some money. I I don't know that we say to the community, we're gonna, if you wanna use your property, you gotta make sure you spend more money than you otherwise would have to, because we like people that spend more money. You know, in many cases, money doesn't dictate the end result, whether it's useful and and fills the landowners purposes. Of course, we try to, why do people go buy a membership at Costco? Because they wanna save some money, right? So so to say, landowner, you can't do this because developers wanna do things on the cheap. Well, if a guy owns his own property, why shouldn't he do things on the cheap if he wants to? Well, I might not like it. Well, I don't like somebody's shirt. Well, I might not like it. Well, I don't like somebody's shirt. It's none of my business if I like it or not.
So let me, I mean, I guess maybe let me rephrase this, I'm, I'm, I guess explore this a little bit with you. The, we have, we have wrote road signs and speed limits, right? Um, basically says you can travel, but you have to follow certain rules, right? And this is kind of the same way I'm looking at this and I'm wondering your thoughts here, because we're basically saying, we can build, you can build. Apartments, you can build lots of apartments or condos. Um, but we, we'd like it to be this way because that's what mitigates our, uh, our risk. Uh, or our current perception of risk, which could be a, a value-driven risk. Uh, economic risk that would, that could be that way. And in a speed limit sense, it's kind of the same way in that you're, 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 you know, you, you know, you can, you, why? So in some ways, well, why don't we just let people drive however fast they wanna go? What we're saying, because it could impact other people. And that impact, albeit not, you know, this say case is a, a could be an economic impact for the landowner. That current, that does say build a more expensive thing and somebody builds something less next to it that makes it more of an ice or. Um, how, how is this different from a, allowing that freedom with giving? So in order to obtain certain rights, you have to give up others, right? Um, and unfortunately, that's the world we live in. I, you know, I'd love to do whatever, but I have to respect people's property rights. And I, you know, I'd love to hunt wherever I want, but I can't because I have to respect property rights. So, so that's an interesting conversation. I don't know if this is.
I can distinguish speed limit, that's easy, because it's health, safety and welfare.
So can you distinguish, um, so, so, so economic welfare, we've already determined in previous conversations. Is an important welfare aspect, right? If you build some, if I build a nice house and someone builds a, a not so nice place next to me and diminishes my value, that's hurting my welfare.
I think that's, that's great.
Anyway.
Yeah.
I will entertain a motion.
Wait, I have one other question, I'm sorry. I just, and mine's more on the procedural side of it. I'm wondering from, uh, from. From the staff from planning, uh, so if an applicant came originally, but we separated from what the applicant originally asked for. And we, uh, if the planning office kind of expanded upon it and said, hey, this is a really good thought. I think that we should probably implement this on a broader sense. Why is it still being put forward as an applicant-driven? Wha- what would be the difference? Why not just say? Um, it might have been the brainchild of an applicant, but, but we took it and we ran with it and now it's a, it's a county-driven thing.
I think that'd be an appropriate way to state it. The applicant has paid a fee, uh, so the applicant has essentially the right to be heard. Um, and the applicant can at any point in time say, you know, this is getting away from what I asked for. Uh, I'd rather go back to what we originally asked for and have the planning commission make a decision on that. Um, up to this time, the applicant hasn't done that. But there is a lot here that the applicant didn't, it wasn't part of the applicant's original request, as you, as you heard from the applicant.
Is, um, is there a timeframe? Cause we still haven't seen the actual. Uh, project from the applicant. It hasn't come forward, uh, to my knowledge. So is there a timeframe that we can expect to see that? Is it in the very near future?
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll see something within the next couple of months, I think. It really is up to the applicant. There is a rezone request that has been submitted. Um, and so I, I suspect you guys will be seeing that within the next two or three meetings, uh, your, your meetings.
Is it, is it a, I don't know, is it, is it more appropriate to table this until the applicants? Since this is applicant-driven, to table it until the applicant has submitted his or her proposal. For consideration and then put forth this, does that?
That, that makes sense and that's up to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. Um, we just have to have the street regulating plan revised. Um, before that rezone can be submitted.
True.
So that's gotta be approved through the legislative body.
So I'm sorry, the street regulating plan that was discussed a moment ago that was neither confirmed nor denied. Whether it would come back to us or just push through with the, uh, not push through, but voted on by the commission. Um, that needs to be in place before any of this can move forward?
Before the rezone can move forward.
And then the rezone should be before the architecture, I mean, I'm trying to get a lay of the procedural land here.
Now, so if the ordinance is written the way that the applicant needs it to be written, for example, um, or just. Let, let's take the applicant out of it altogether and just say the ordinance is written in a way that has specific standards listed in it. And an applicant comes in and says, I'm cool with those standards, I'd like a rezone so I could use those standards. Uh, the applicant at that point knows what to expect. Um, they know what the ordinance requirements are. So it's better to get the ordinance changed in advance of a rezone request. Um, we, we definitely do need to get the, um, street regulating plane, uh, uh, plan changed. In order to accommodate that rezone request, again, if that is what the county commission ultimately wants to do. And so those two make sense to go hand in hand, the street regulating plan, um, and the rezone, or at least one right after the other. As far as the standards, uh, architectural standards or other standards of the code goes. Um, if I were a developer, I would wanna know what those are out the gate before I even come in and ask for a rezone. Um, so I know what I'm actually getting when I'm asking for the rezone.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Would you mind throwing up your redlined thing again, so I can note it? It's different than the packet, right?
Uh, it, uh, no, it should, well, sorry, yes, yes, the redline version is different, hang on. Sorry, forgive me. Okay. And, and the way that it's different is the, uh, the hand-drawn N's and A's in there. Um, if you went with this recommendation, like for example, this N would change to the A. On the screen that you're seeing here.
So the red, the red was what the motion was based on, right?
Yes.
And to be. Direct, I would make the same motion again with the understanding that. Yeah, you know, even take the applicant out of the, just forget there's an applicant, that this is applicant driven. I think this stands on its own, in my own opinion. Uh, but if you factor the applicant in, the applicant already owns land there. The applicant's asking for a, a street regulating plan that's different, that gives them more flexibility. I believe on the single-family side, is that right?
Um, the flexibility for them would be for mixed-use commercial and multifamily.
Yeah. They have, it's going to have single-family in there as well.
There will be some, yeah.
So it moves the streets around a little bit to make it better for their mixed use.
This does not.
Pardon me? This, this has nothing to do with their streets, but they already own the land. They could go in there with the ex- the current street regulating plan if they wanted to. They just want it tweaked somewhat. So I do believe this stands on its own, even without the applicant. Um, I think it adds flexibility. I think it makes things a little more to flow. I think it gives developers in the future more choices to look at. And I don't think it, it really hangs on the applicant or not. For example, if this applicant tomorrow were to say, I, I just don't wanna do it. I still think the mountain Alpine style they asked for. Is going to be built in that area, since it already has been. And since it's so pervasive already in the valley and probably it's had the most architectural money spent on it in any. Of any style in any mountain community in the last fifteen years. I now actually know that to be true. So I think this just stands on its own anyway.
Something to, to consider and, and perhaps for, uh, the planning commissioners who are thinking, um, who, voting against the changes. Something to consider is if, um, a landowner who is on highway one sixty-two or within that street regulating plan right now. They came in and they wanted to, um, rezone to the form base, their only option would be agrarian under our current ordinance. And what this would do is it would give that landowner more options, uh, with or without the applicant. I don't, I don't know if that helps you guys make a decision at all, but, um, I, I would tend to agree with Commissioner Barber. And I, I think it's not very impactful. I think it just opens up opportunities, whether or not the applicant is.
If they could come in and ask for more.
That's right. So anyone who comes, it, that, you're right, anyone who owns property, uh, in that area could come in and ask for the same thing to be changed for them. Yep.
Okay, a couple of questions. On Old West, it was to have been allowed in Newtown. It is allowed in Old Town. What's the rationale to remove it from Newtown? Because these, these are areas right in close proximity to each other.
Yeah.
That could, I mean, first thought is, well, I would tie the areas kinda together.
Yeah, I, I could potentially do that. I'm, I would ask the question to Commissioner Barber.
The Old West, as I understand it, is. The type of structures that exist in Old Town Eden already, so the general store building, the blacksmith. Those I take as Old West structures, eighteen hundreds, like in downtown Ogden. None of that, to my knowledge, right now exists in the Newtown area. Anything you were to put up there now that looked like that, in my opinion. A standing on its own would probably stick out kinda funny. Um, and knowing what else has already been built there and what the trends are. It's my outlook that that would not be a popular trend. And that if you were to do that, it would look contrived and it wouldn't look great. Now, I've heard it said before, those two areas are gonna merge together someday. I certainly hope not. I think if it did, if they did, number one, that's not what the Ogden Valley General Plan contemplates. So I would hope whoever's ever in control at that time would. Have that understanding and, and hopefully they wouldn't allow those two to merge completely together. Because I think that would be terrible for the valley, that much tight density across that much area. There'd be bigger problems, in my opinion, than just what the architecture looks like. So I didn't look at the, this matrix, thinking the two are gonna merge together anytime soon or ever. Hopefully, I don't, I hope they don't. I don't, I haven't talked to anyone in the valley who hopes they do. So I didn't consider the two merging together and I just looked at the two areas, what's exist, what exists there now? What likely would exist there in the future? And would somebody really come in and spend the money to build a legitimate Old West building? In the Newtown area, that just doesn't seem to be consistent with how people would spend their money, in my opinion. But anybody can do anything and they could always come and ask to have it put back in if their project made sense.
So is a log cabin Old West or is it something else?
I would consider that based on what I saw to be mountain rustic.
Yeah, or even, uh, well, it depends on what the log cabin is, like the old or the, uh, the grocery store right now. That's probably mountain rustic or you may even be able to fit it within the, um, agriculture, uh, theme. But each of those themes have very specific, um, seven or eight different specific requirements. And so if you could check the box, yes, it complies with this, this and this, then you could see which ones it complies with.
Now, we have some log cabin, little commercial development there in Newtown Eden now.
Mm-hmm.
But you wouldn't call that west.
Old West, uh, not, not in accordance with the standards that are in the Old West, um, portion of this one.
Okay. And as I understand it, agrarian is the only one you can have a pitched roof on?
No, no. In fact, most of these allow pitched roofs. Even the Old West allows a pitched roof. You just need a parapet wall that comes up above that.
But it, but it's a shed roof.
Not necessarily.
Not a gable roof.
You'd have a gable roof, yes.
Okay. So what was, why are we taking agrarian out of Newtown?
Uh, a- again, uh, suggestions by Commissioner Barber that are up for discussion. And so.
So again, just looking at what's there, looking at. Architectural styles that you see, and, and when you say, you know, that particular style means a lot of different things, so. There's a lot of documents I've seen where the Huntsville, the, um, Lodge Observatory is referenced. And I don't think that's a great reference because they use that barn structure in the silo for the observatory. And I don't think, I've never seen anywhere a mixed-use commercial building. That's been able to utilize that style to come up with any sort of a function of commercial structure that you can build and sell. Profit probably, or else you'd see it. You see the farmhouse style more. But that column to me means way more than the farmhouse style. And I think you could probably bu- bend the farmhouse style if that's your outlook, which is a commercial style. You'd probably bend that into mountain rustic or even mountain Alpine to some degree, depending on how you did it.
Yeah.
Would you agree to it?
I would, yeah. Uh, my biggest concern with the agrarian style, just from the get-go, from the beginning, was do we want every single building to look like a barn? Uh, and I don't know if the answer to that question is yes, but it was what the general plan asked for. Uh, sorry, the general plan didn't ask for every single building to look like a barn, but the general plan did ask for some agrarian styling. And so you see the examples.
Basically, huge emphasis in the general plan is rural and agrarian farms.
I think that, I think that, yeah, I think the tribute is intended to be to agriculture. Um, and, and following that with, uh, following through with that in the Newtown Eden area was the intent of that originally.
So your discussion kind of makes my point that I'm not well. Able to explain that you're, you're just talking about subjective likes and dislikes. And so why should everybody be, I mean, you're wonderful, smarter than I am people. But why should the whole valley be saddled with your choices on what's acceptable and what isn't? Or the landlord's choice of what he wants to do on his property? That's my problem.
We're not talking about the valley, we're talking about these form-based villages designed for density. Designed for new construction, designed for development. That's the whole intent, is to develop in those places, whether you agree or not. A lot of people don't agree with that, but that's what the general plan says, that's code, that's the trend. And so we're not talking about valley. If somebody really wants to build a barn-like building somewhere on a commercial basis. They can do that in other commercial settings, or they could do that here in the Old Town area. Or they could have it allowed anywhere in any form base.
No.
But, but we're not talking about valley, we're talking about these right now, three pretty dense.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand why a guy that owns some property in Newtown, and he wants to have a commercial barn dance arena, he can't have it. It's gotta be a mountain modern arena, or he can't do it. And then it can't be a barn dance, it's gotta be a mountain rustic barn, a mountain rustic dance.
Um, the original proposal, if you look, um, behind the red line, it does mention maybe agrarian would be appropriate. Instead of within twenty feet of the, of a public street, maybe in the back. And, um, part of my thought process on that was, well, maybe if the agricultural-looking building is where barns typically are, out in the back. Uh, maybe that would be okay.
Yeah.
Um, so happy to go either direction, whatever you guys feel is appropriate here.
I'll entertain another motion. Somebody has one.
I'll make a motion to table the proposed changes in the. Request for reconsideration of the form-based zone architectural styles, ZTA twenty twenty-three dash through three point one. With. With the understanding that these changes or other changes like this could be evaluated with a. Proposed project that was in an approved area of the current form-based zone. As written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Charlie, is there anybody else, other applicants that are waiting on a decision like this, or is this the only one?
This is the only one right now. Um, we've got a, there are two other, uh, parcels over in Old Town. Um, I think the, uh, applicants already have their style picked out.
They're happy with it.
Yeah, I think so. They haven't informed us that they like to see something different.
Commissioner Torman, would you mind restating, uh, your motion, just, just for me in a little bit more layman speak?
Okay, so.
Just the intent of it?
The intent of my motion is to, if we had an applicant that came in that had. Property in the form-based zone in the multifamily, that meets the criteria of this matrix. And they're asking for some changes in their design. to fit their project, that would be an appropriate time, in my opinion, to make some changes if it fit.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. So basically, um, I think this is a bit more procedural in the fact that, uh, because the applicant owns property, as I understand it, but, but it's not in the form-based and since we're looking at an applicant um, driven item about changing something in the form-based, you think it would be more appropriate to table this until that applicant becomes zoned for form-based?
Correct. Any applicant, if they propose something that was in the form-based zone in the multifamily commercial area, and it was already in that zone, then I would say it would be an appropriate time to start talking about design elements or architectural standards at that point.
Okay, um, thank you for, for points of discussion. I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Barber that I, when I looked at this grid, um, I looked at it, uh, without considering anything being applicant-driven or county. I was just looking at it being a change to the form-based, and I do think it stands alone, but I completely see the point of, of the procedure, um, maybe being a little bit of cart and horse. And so I can, I, just letting kind of people know how I'm feeling, I, I do believe that this grid is appropriate and stands alone, but I can, I can very much agree on the procedure aspect of that.
Chair, may I ask a question, please?
Um, sure.
When you table something, typically, there is a specific time that it's going to be reconsidered after a specific thing happens or more information is gathered or something like that. And so my question is, just to make sure it's clear on the record, are you, is the motion to table it until any applicant who owns property in the form-based zone brings some kind of request for a change to the architectural standards in that zone that would apply to that applicant?
That is correct.
Okay, so that would be the triggering event for we can, uh, well, I guess making a decision on the.
Yeah, like a reconsidering, a reconsideration of the architectural.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear on the record. That's the triggering event for actually taking action.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion? We have a motion to, uh, table until such time that there is a um, um, form-based village, uh, based zone-based applicant.
I have one comment. I'm, I'm going to vote no because I don't think it's fair to the applicant. Uh, I think the county did the right thing by going in the matrix direction to expand it and make it um, the matrix approach, I think, long-term is a good approach. Now the applicant is hanging out there, having paid a fee, not knowing what their end result will be until other things happen that may or not be pertinent. But they asked a question. Now they're not getting an answer because the county was trying to do the right thing. And so now we're going to drag it out further. So I'm going to vote no on tabling it. Applicant deserves progress, or being told no, that style is not appropriate.
Thank you.
May I ask you another question? I'm sorry. And that is, if, if this or another applicant in the form, either this applicant rezones or another applicant that's already zoned, um, requests this, do they, if it is the same applicant, can that, can the fee for this request just basically be held with the table?
Can you restate the question one more time? I'm sorry.
So if this item is tabled until someone within the form-based zone requests it, um, and that's any, any applicant within the form-based zone, but for example, if the same applicant achieves the rezone and then goes for this, uh, architectural change, wouldn't his or her original fee be held with the table?
Uh, yeah, as long as it remains tabled, the only way that that fee would be spent is if a, uh, decision is made, final decision by the county commission is made, uh, contrary to what the applicant's asking for, then they'd have to come in and file a new application with a new fee.
Okay.
So point, point of order, if, that we can request, so, so, so you can, uh, you can, we can look at a friendly amendment? If there are any recommendations or questions of, say, got a holdup on something, maybe we can look at something like that?
I'm not going to make a amendment. I think I have with the matrix. My comments and and if it's going to be dragged out. Yes, I don't support dragging it out. If we know what.
Okay. Understand where I'm coming from on this. It, this has nothing to do with an applicant or anything that's been proposed. It's a procedural thing that I think is backwards. So it has nothing to do with a, I, I think there's probably some great designs in there. I'm not denying the designs. I'm designing, denying the process in which it's happening. It's backwards. An applicant comes, it's in the zone. You know, in the multifamily commercial zone, they come out with some great ideas. I don't think that's a problem to start reviewing those and you know, there's probably an approval that takes place. It's backwards.
Like, we have an applicant making recommendations for the whole town and he's, and right as it sits right now, it's not zoned for what he's even suggesting.
And it's pending the subject change as well.
And if that goes through, then maybe bring it back and look at what, because it's went through, but we're not, the changes are probably great. It's just, he's making decisions with people that aren't even applying. I mean, it's not, he's, it's not ready, so we're not holding anybody out. I think the applicant simply caused the county and this commission to think about this. And if this, as I said, if this applicant were to go away tomorrow, be it, I still think the matrix stands on its own. And sure, you know, maybe there's always better procedural. I've seen all sorts of inconsistencies since I've been on this commission, but um, I look at that almost as a separate issue when this, if this, if it stands on its own, be it if it doesn't, then maybe there's something else that should trigger it. But in this case, I think the I want to say does a favor, but in, in, just pushed this forward uh, so that others can utilize the work that has been done over what, three or four different sessions now?
I, um, I'm going to ask the planning office, are there rules that state that, um, if you have suggestions or requests of changes to various ordinances or the writing of some architectural standards, obviously is what we're dealing with, that it must apply to you, that you must be willing to move forward with it? What if a regular resident just happens to be reading these things and has this great idea and is willing to pay the fee to get that idea on the table?
Yep, there, there's no obligation for it to apply to them. They, any, any resident, uh, can ask for a change to the code, file a fee, and whether or not they actually use that change is, is up to them for the future.
So okay, so there, so there's not an actual procedure that is being misstepped? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Uh, well, no, there's no procedure that the county has established. Um, there may be a, a perceived, uh, procedure or a, a desired procedure, uh, which, I mean, this is legislative, so there's, there's no wrong answer to that question.
Okay. But we're not breaking a rule if we do. And is, is there precedent either way?
Um, because it's legislative, the precedence wouldn't have precedence.
Okay.
We have a motion on the motion that's been seconded and we, uh, will now call for a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Hi.
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 All opposed?
Opposed. Opposed.
Opposed. Um. So the motion ties again. I I, uh, I got a couple of comments, I guess. And, um, I appreciate everyone being willing to share their comments, by the way, and be, be, uh, have, have good, have beliefs. I, I, I think this, have their opinions and they're fabulous. Uh, that we can share them. Um. The, so if I, if you view this in a, in, in, the way I'm looking at this, is you view this in a, in a, in just itself and you tend to take the other things outside of it and say, okay. Um, one question is, are we creating more freedom or less? And as it currently stands, um, I, I know Charlie took the screen down, but as it currently stands, there is more regulation in this zone. So if I'm in this zone, I have to follow certain guidelines that are not available. I don't have choices that I would have if this is approved.
Or apply for.
Say what?
Or apply for changes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and so, um, as it's currently stated, we, you have minimal, less. And with this, it would allow more, which that's something I view favor, favorably in, um, in, when you take the, uh, you, you've, you've made great comments that I, I totally agree with it. It's, it's, well, you know, we have an applicant who wants to do something that the community may or may not want. We don't have public opinion. We've had public opinion about other aspects, you know, there may be some, some, some concerns there and this might be part of it. Um, with that, there, there's definite concerns. Um, I think generally, this is, you know, if we could, if we could view this separately, this would be a step in the right direction for freedom of landowner and, uh, and be better for everyone. When, when you take things, uh, as a whole, it's, it's definitely a much bigger decision. So, um, I don't know, I, I suppose, uh, in some senses, tabling it, I think is a good idea to think about this. Um, I don't know that triggering, the trigger for that is, I think that's probably the holdup. I think there might be a little bit better or another way and we might need to trigger that, because I think that this has, has shown that there, that it is difficult to eh, that there's a lot of restrictions as it is. And whether we like that or not, there, there, we have looked at making changes in this proposal. Um, I think that saying that we wait till someone comes in, it's going to be difficult, uh, that way now, saying, hey, if we wait till, um, this is a county-driven proposal, maybe that, that's better, something like that. I'm not quite sure.
Do we have to have another public hearing to do a county-driven?
I would think it'd be a little different.
If you want to deny this one, but bring the same thing back as a county-driven proposal, um, you'd have to recommend denial. We'd have to go to the county commission and get a final denial. Um, but if, if that's the case, if it's just a concern of whether or not the applicant applied for it versus the county proposing it, I could tell you right now that the what is being put forth is far more, um, it's, it's it's more, uh, different than what the applicant has asked for. In fact, what the applicant has asked for is on the screen, uh, right now. Um, and so it's almost the same thing as the county essentially initiating.
And I'm looking at this as a county-driven one because it doesn't have an applicant's name on there. I mean, I'm looking this, looking at this as a, essentially a county-driven one, kind of. But it was fed off of a applicant-driven.
Yeah.
I know the applicant's not on here. So I get that, but it was the procedural thing because it was initially applicant-driven. That's the, that's the hangup I have.
If we bring it forward as county-driven, uh, would that change the dialogue a little bit?
Is there going to be different changes to what it is now, or is it the same thing?
Probably the same, but we can.
That would be our input, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Be based on what you guys.
The five styles listed across the top. Let me get general. Old West, agrarian, mountain rustic, mountain modern, mountain alpine. Do they fit within the general plan? Are they acceptable within the concept of the general plan?
I think they are.
Appropriate for the valley.
I think they are.
Okay. I would, I would be happy with a matrix if the N's were replaced by As and these five styles were allowed everywhere. I'm happy.
Yeah.
Right, because I, I can only see arbitrary reasons for putting N's here and there.
That makes sense.
And if it's arbitrary, it didn't, we shouldn't be doing it. So I'd support a motion to approve this matrix with As everywhere. You want a motion? Um. We're doing it again.
I don't know. Um, I guess let me question you on that then. The, so in some sense, that would mean that we're saying that we're okay with certain levels of regulation, but not enough to allow for a flourishing design theme. And I know that there can be subjectivity, so I get that that's a tough question to answer. But in some sense, we, we both, we all know that there's Old Town and Need Newtown, that we can pretty much determine as it stands currently, that there is a differentiation. You've got a more, you've got Carlos and Harley's, you know, the general store, you've got the blacksmith shop, you've got the old, uh, the barn, uh, Sunnyfield. And so you've got, generally got a different design theme there than you do in Newtown. So there's already a certain design theme there. And so that's where I'd say, well, okay, we have this certain design theme, if um, I, you're right, it, it's tough to say, no, you can't do something with your land. However, it is also not fair for someone to build a, a giant building that blocks my view that I bought, I paid more for.
I think it is, it is. That's part of the law.
It's, yeah, well, there, therein, you're, you're not wrong, but the, the, there, there is a certain level of, I, I'm not sure how the best word this, that says, because, because in what you said there is saying, we're okay with certain levels of regulation. And, but not, but not enough. It's like, we're, we're willing to save certain numbers of people, but not others.
There is a tendency here to want to regulate. Okay. I go the other way. I don't want to regulate. But I cannot see any, if we want to regulate, I don't see any reason that you can't have uh, one of these other styles that are appropriate for the valley. For example, in Old Town, why, why can't we have an agrarian? Why can't we have a, uh, modern, mountain modern?
I think the reason that you would lean more towards the way Charlie did this modifications would be just like you said before a couple of times, that the, uh, general plan talks about rural aspect, about farm and things like that. And I think to pay homage to that, to the extent possible, given reality, given this new brand and development density, then you do want to preserve some of that to the extent possible in Old Town where it exists and where it makes sense. And you want to try to keep that, like you said a couple of times yourself, that, you know, it's in there, it exists, so let's try to the extent we can keep that there, to keep that flavor there, to be unique, to pay homage to the, to the history of the valley going forward, like the current developer has done on a really nice job with that commercial building behind the blacksmith. They spent a lot of money building that small building in that way. And it's not even on the street. They just spent a lot of money to make that thing fit in. Good for them. They really did a nice thing for the valley. Um, so I think having what Charlie did here in the various columns with the expansion suggested um, does make sense. And just leaving it wide open, I think would be a bit contrary to general plan says and what, what you just said about trying to reserve, preserve as much of that role as we can.
Rural doesn't need to be Old West. I, I remember in one of our work meetings, and this not to pick on Charlie, but where you handed out the different colored pens and said, everybody just, and some maps and said, just draw some lines where you think that ought to be. It was totally arbitrary. And to us, in, in a sense, I think this table is kind of arbitrary. Well, if we got a table, we got to put some ends somewhere. Well, let's put them over here so we can have some ends. Well, let things develop. If, uh, the new building over at, uh, the, uh, Sunnyfield Farm, if he said, yeah, I'm going to build on the theme I've already got going, I'll just continue the theme on it. That's his decision. He owns it. Great. He bears the consequences. If it works, great. He bears the consequences. If it works, great, he gets the benefits. If it doesn't work, he suffers the consequences.
His neighbors do too, though, Commissioner. If you look over at, I mean, the the distillery did a beautiful job with their building. And where Sterling Automotive was, they they paid extra to put, you know. A nice-looking facade on and then directly across from those businesses, we now have a cement block. Storage unit. With no paint, no design. Uh, because that's what that developer wanted to do, whether for economics or whatever. I I think it behooves us on a planning commission to try to set some standards to protect. The residents and the businesses of the valley. Uh, from from someone who may have a different aesthetic, but it does negatively impact those around them.
Well, in that sense, my proposal to put an A in all of these four box, five. Boxes here for everywhere. Uh, we were just told that these designs are all appropriate for the valley. They're consistent with the general plan. So if they're appropriate for the valley, well, in these form-based zones. That'll be appropriate. Put them there. They're not. The storage shed kind of thing you just described. And this is just a form-based zone. But if they're appropriate on this side of the street, why not the other side of the street? There's no rational way we can distinguish. Other than just arbitrarily, we ought to have some ends in here somewhere. So that's my point.
Chairman, you're talking Old Town a different and the Newtown looks different. Where's that line?
Well, they're they're gonna look different.
Yeah.
By themselves, they they just will.
Where that line is where you start saying we're getting into Newtown, then we get the whole, you know.
Do we care?
While we use it as an example.
Well, I I don't think we care. If it's the valley and the valley is rural and the valley rustic and the valley is agrarian and we support agriculture. Then we don't have to have lines say, well, this is cornfields over here and this is only wheat fields allowed over here. You just mix them in. That's rural.
Mr. Chairman, one of the reasons why I brought up this is because it is what the applicant had originally requested. Uh, what you guys looked at in your first work session. Building off of this, what I heard from the planning commissioner was, well, maybe we need to allow, so. And take a step back. What we're what we're looking at here is uh the applicant's request of adding a new design type that could be allowable. Uh, in the Newtown Eden area. So just essentially raw what the applicant has asked for. Um, the discussion at that work session was, well. If we're gonna mix and match a little bit of architectural styling together in the same village, maybe we need to. Expand that so that there are multiple options in different villages as well. So that's how that progressed to the design matrix. Um, I don't know if it would be helpful uh or hurtful to. Show you guys what it has been requested by the applicant and maybe take action on that instead. Uh, and then we can uh defer the matrix to another meeting when it's a county-initiated.
I I I think we should look at a table to rework on this. What do you think? Can we just redo another work session on this? Anybody gonna be open to that?
My proposal doesn't allow glass-covered skyscrapers. But what I'm proposing is if these styles, we've said these styles are good for the valley. Okay, let's put them in the valley. Don't restrict where they go.
If you would like to make a motion, let's let's have it.
I I move the uh. We approve item number two point one. To a to send a recommendation of approval to the county commission. With the exception that section one oh four twenty-two two. Point zero two zero. Uh, subparagraph C, the matrix there is changed that. And and I don't know that we can change West Weaver Village. So we would eliminate that part of it at the bottom, but the the ends are changed to A and the language in this. Proposal be changed to be consistent with the table that has. For example, in Old Town Eden, uh agrarian N now listed would be changed to an A. That the first. Six lines, five lines are all As allowed.
Do we have a second? Not hearing a second. Um, I'm gonna. Say the motion does dies. Unless we have a second. Did I give sufficient time? Okay. Can we can we table this to look at to look at it in a work session? Anybody wanna make a motion for that?
Chairman, what is it that if we table it to look at what we're currently looking at further? What? What would you? Propose, I mean.
I would propose that we go back and relook at this since we are undecided and unsure of what it is that we would like to pass. And we're not making a lot of progress.
Look at the substance such as.
Mm-hmm.
What? Marked in each of the. So.
I think we 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 revisit. So what is the code as it stands today uh that we've already passed? Um, and say, all right, does this fit with what we've been working on? And just get a second to revisit cuz it has been a while and there was a lot on our plates when we did this. Cuz we had the street regulating plan, so I'm not surprised that there's a differentiation here in in opinions. And it's because there's so much here and was there at the time. So. Yeah, I think it would be good to just revisit it, see if we all have a, we can come to a conclusion on what the valley. I say what the what the residents and what what what's a good opinion for how they should, what's a good plan? That the developer should be following.
I think a big key for me is to see what the street regulating plan's gonna end up at. Where the commercial's gonna go, and then we can visual right now. We're just guessing. And then if it rezones, then I can do it and it just it's way ahead of what. If we're driving down the road and wanna see a theme.
That's a great thing. Maybe we table up until the. The county commission makes a decision on the street regulating plan. Is that a good trigger? That would be allow you to revisit.
We'd have a real applicant knowing what he can really do and and pick a theme.
At least have decision on that. Yeah, that's fair, saying, okay, we we have a better idea of where the county would like to go with this, you know, whether. You know, whether that commission, that that motion's approved or not. I think that's a that's a motionable thing, right? It is.
And and that would be better for a time certain, um where it's applicant-driven. It would give a. A certain date to act on it.
That's essentially what my last motion was. So.
All right, any, I'll entertain another motion.
I move to table item. Z T A twenty twenty-three dash three oh three point one. To further discuss. The designation of accepted and not accepted in the Old Town Newtown Nordic Valley area. And to. Do a work session to discuss further.
Friendly amendment, maybe. Um, do you wanna set the standard of after? You know, so what was discussed is after the street regulating plan has been decided by the county, we can look at this again, is that?
Yes, that is correct. I accept your friendly amendment.
Thank you. Um, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed for the same reasons I said before.
Opposed for the same reasons.
All right, the motion carries forward to to table cuz I understand the motion is to table up until. The county commission has made a decision on the street regulating plan proposed changes. Okay. All right, thanks, everybody. We will now move to item number three, public comment for items not on the agenda. If you have a comment, please come forward.
Thank you guys for all the time you put in. Uh, discussing these issues. Uh, my comment that I have today, my name is John Bingham. And I live at thirty-four eighty-three North Willowbrook Lane in Eden. Um, there has been an item that has been placed on the agenda twice now. And then pulled. It's a conditional use permit for an agritourism operation within a. Uh, residential zone. Uh, I would ask that. You that you consider. Uh, having a public hearing. Uh, with regard to this particular application. Because there really hasn't been opportunity for public comment. On this particular application, and I know that there has been many. Um. Neighbors who would like to. Uh, comment or make suggestions on uh this particular application. So that would be my request is that you consider a public hearing. When when and if that does come up for on your agenda again. I know it's been pulled twice. I don't know why it's been pulled twice, but you know, I come prepared to s- to speak on it. But then find out that it's been pulled off the agenda. I think if you have a public hearing. It would be a better notification for those who might want to make comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment for items not on the agenda? All right. We'll go to uh remarks from the planning commissioners, if there are any.
Just to follow up on the idea of suggesting. To the county. In some way that they encourage you to put in a runaway truck ramp on trappers. Where we've had numerous accidents. I think you're gonna look into that, Director.
Yeah, we forwarded that on to UDOT um to look at that. Um, I haven't heard back from you.
Thank you.
So I read that the mayor of Huntsville Town contacted governor directly. And the governor referred it specifically to UDOT. And what I read had a UDOT UDOT comment in there that the cost would be five million dollars. And from what I read, it did not sound like a imminent project.
Okay, any uh remarks for planning to grinding director report, Rick?
Yes, um, the county commissioner approved the Kobe development um a few um meetings ago. That was before we met last, but um they approved it as you recommended. So just FYI on that. And then the September twenty-six sixth meeting, just a reminder that will be at the library, uh that will be at four thirty, the pre-meeting.
At the Ogden Valley Library?
At the Huntsville Library in the Ogden Valley. Um, we've um put information out there to let people know. Um, what's happening um on that. Formatted meeting's not totally set. But um we will have action items that you will be reviewing the first part of the meeting. And then most likely the other part of the meeting, um we may talk about the general plan and have an open house style format. So. But that's not totally set, but we'll, there'll be a packet will come out to you on that. Any questions on that?
I read that um, believe I read that part of the presentation would focus on. Uh sewer infrastructure.
Um, we haven't actually sent anything out formally on how that was going to be laid out. But that's a possibility is that we may be talking about the village and sewer infrastructure, but. That portion of the meeting is to be determined.
Rick, I think June sent out a public notification, which did mention.
I read that too.
No. It mentioned sewer and and then a little discussion.
Yeah, yeah, we may talk about that, but we will send some more detail out on that specifically, but.
If that is on the agenda, would that be presented by the consultants who did the work or somebody?
It would be presented most likely by staff. Yeah, that's not totally set in stone, but we will have something put out there specifically in the near future.
And that's the end, that's the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-sixth, yep. And then the last one is just a reminder about the Utah EPA conference. If you are interested in that. Um, we will pay for your registration. It's and that's on September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. That's Thursday and Friday. That's all I have.
Thank you. Portland.
No remarks, thanks.
Right. Okay, well, we will adjourn to a work session. Thank you, everybody. We'll go in this other room here. That's all right with you guys unless gee, do we wanna stay? It's up to you. This is a strong pull for the.
What which of these are you, are you here for a specific item? Yes, I'm here for the first work item. But. Okay, great.
So.
We're ready.
Mr. Wamp, are you there?
I am.
Alright, well, we'll go ahead and get started, we'll have that item number one. Work session item number one. Rick's not here, so Charlie, why don't you explain what we're doing?
So we've got a request from an individual to rezone property to the form based zone. They are in the street regulating plan of the Old Town Eden area. They're across the street to the east from the Sunnyfield form based reason that was recently done. I believe it's about two acres of property or so, the applicant seeking to get two lots on those two acres of property. Street regulating plan does suggest one unit to the acre in that street regulating area. Kind of an odd shaped lot, and it's got a, I think a canal or ditch or something that crosses it, so. I'm not entirely certain on all the different specificities of how the regulations may apply. But we at the very least want to help the applicant get just a sense from planning commission on your level of comfort moving forward with the with the reason.
Will this require a TBR?
They will.
And is Bill presenting?
Bill will be presenting this, yep.
Alright, Bill, let's have it.
I I really don't have much more to add than what Charlie said. You see, the applicant's language there provided a brief narrative about what they're looking to do. Charlie covered that pretty pretty succinctly and accurately, so I don't feel like I have anything to add to that. On time for everything. On page two, you're looking at that's the location of where the property is. As Charlie noted, it is right across the street from some property that already has been changed to the form base code. And you've got just just a little over two acres, is that right, Sam?
Yeah, so it's two lots, there's zero zero one two. And then just to the south of it, you can kind of see a gap between what highlighted in blue and the next one, that's another half acre, so between the two of them, it's two point seven six acres.
So not quite three, I guess is what I'm getting.
Yeah, and that little just to the north, you see the canal, and then to the north of the canal is also part of that same property. It's not highlighted in blue, but that little strip there is part of that same lot. Bill, can you pull up the?
I can't, I'm not connected to the thing, so. Charlie could, Charlie's good, he can.
I looked at the at the map. When I saw this and I asked a couple of questions, but I think I heard back, it looks when you look at the map, and maybe it's just the optic from the map, that this long skinny parcel actually sits on top of our neighbor's driveway. Is that just going to run, or is there something going on there?
It's it's it's, you can't base your understanding of where people's driveways and homes are based on the aerial imagery. So that would have to be we'd have to look at that to make sure that it's not covering the.
So why is there, I mean that lot, that parcel? The twenty-five parcel, I believe. Why is that a long skinny parcel even existed, is there something going on?
It's tough to know, when those parcels were made, maybe one was a remnant parcel of some other something that took place.
It was a nineteen eighty-one parcel?
Yeah, so.
We haven't been able to figure out why it was made.
If if the time comes that they do a plat to re to realign these parcels, that would be the time that they would all, it would clean all that up, yeah.
So looking at the well parcel, there is a, it's listed as a US government property. That bisects that, is that a?
Yeah, B O R.
Or a.
It's the canal.
It's a canal, main canal, it's up there.
So that and does that property have been right away on your side of it as well?
It's likely that what happened was when the B O R came through and purchased property or used him in domain or whatever they did here, that they just cut that parcel right in half, and so I don't think it's right away, I think it's probably owned in fee. But at the time, what occurred when, whether it was a street or a canal or whatever, when a public way was exacted from a property owner. The original legal description remains. And then I just at the bottom, it says accepting this legal description for the canal. And so it looks like two separate lots because it is separated by another parcel. But it's technically a single parcel that's separated by.
But that's a real canal.
Yes.
Water flows through it.
Yeah, it's the main canal on the east bench there.
Alright.
So what we're doing here in the work session is basically reviewing this idea and giving feedback to the applicants. That's right, as to just what.
Absolutely right. Yep.
Have you reviewed to see if it meets all the requirements?
We haven't done a more robust review yet, we'll we'll have that full stack report and all that ready for you in your next meeting, yeah.
Would be a public hearing?
It will be a public hearing, yep.
So at that meeting, you will have, because when I just looked at the map and saw that canal, it belongs to the government. And that there's a house there already. And there's a house next door with a driveway that goes right along it. My first question was, well, how would you fit a second lot on there that meets county requirements?
Yeah.
But you haven't done that yet.
No, not yet, and and honestly, at the rezone level, we don't usually look at that level specificity. When they come in for the subdivision, that's when survey level accuracy is going to be required. And so they may get the rezone and then find out for some reason, surveying or legal descriptions don't work out in a way where they can comply with the form base. At that point, maybe they come in and ask for a different kind of zone, or they don't get what they're asking for.
So would the applicant like to say anything about, well, because I mean with the form base vote, and especially in residential, which this would be. I mean, aside from lot standards and things, there's not a lot we do really.
No.
Do you have anything you'd like to tell? Yeah, so this came about first with the April meeting of this year where the lot of crops were launched for just about twenty acres was rezoned to form base. And at that time, the house that we're in, just on this lot, had failed the underground water studies. So we weren't able to add on any bedrooms or anything, and my wife really wants to, so. We started looking at other lots or something to build on, and and then hearing all the discussion about form based zone, I realized that a rezoning of our parcel would fit within Ogden Valley general plan where rather than developing in a open space, you know, scenic and open space like that, we could, because we live in a village area. Change to form based zoning and meet the the street zone for forty-four thousand square foot lots. And you can see that there's forty-four thousand square foot lots all around. And so we started looking at whether we could do the same with our properties, form based zone and have forty-four thousand, two forty-four thousand square foot lots. And so that's the nature of the application. We've talked about the Ogden Valley Canal about the canal that goes through, and as you can see, it cuts through four, five other lots as it passes through, and it's just a they grant an easement, so you can go across it, build a bridge. As was mentioned, that would be a separate process later on to actually have approval to build. And and I mean, we've already talked about just some materials, we're letting their profitability. But for now, the the ask is just with form based zone being across the street and forty-four thousand square foot lot being, you know, on every side. And the street that we're on being zoned for forty-four thousand acre lots, the only way to do that is to be changed to the form based zone. And so that's what we're seeing.
Could you clarify, maybe something you said about you wanted to add on, but you failed some sort of study?
Yeah, the underground water study where our current septic tank is to add on a bedroom. We would have to enlarge that dick, and so we, the water studies were such that we wouldn't be able to enlarge that day. And so that's when we were considering moving and building on a different lot, but learning more about the Ogden Valley general plan, it made sense since we live in a village area to keep developing in village areas and keep open space, open space.
But do you believe, you know, that you failed to be able to expand your your current system, that you could actually put a completely separate system, raise adjacent?
Yeah, so we did studies across the lot, and it's it's on an incline, so the higher up the the west or the eastern part of the lot passed. So that's, yeah, so we would be able to do subject there, just slants down and you get closer to the current house. And so the underground, the water says pass up higher and lower where the current is. Charlie or Bill, do you feel this meets the intent of the form based village? Being on that, I mean, it's it's on the street, right, your lot is on the street, so that would fall into that criteria, meaning the form base owner.
Yeah, let me turn to that. Simple answer is yes.
Yeah, that's the short answer is, it was clearly anticipated when the form base code was adopted, that this area would develop out as has been represented, so there's no reason, that's on, it's on this page here. So that's, and that's cut and paste right from the code.
So a couple of things that we'll need to look at a little bit closer is what our flag lot requirements are. They may be able to do a flag lot to get access to that rear portion, so divide one acre on the back, one acre on the front if they wanted to.
How's a flag lot fit into a form based village?
My recollection, and don't quote me from this, my recollection is that as long as the lot is getting access to that street in the street regulating plan, then that whatever that street is designated as the lot would be designated as, so in other words, if somebody's access came off of a flag stamp on this.
We took flag lots pretty much out, because we said we didn't want a lot of them.
Yeah, there was so much friction on flag lot on our last iteration, I recall.
Yeah, so, and that that I guess that does beg the question, so we if we do, I mean, that really opens this up to the which can be fine, but I don't know that that's the intent of what we're trying, of what that was. Right, rather than flag lot, could you just do an easement across?
No, because you need frontage. These are all questions that we would work through as with and with as staff with the applicant when it came time to subdivide and actually create a lot. A lot of these technical questions are are good to ask and kind of keep in the back of your mind, but the the question right now before us is, is this the right time and is this the right place for this form based code to go in? And if the answer to that is yes, then, you know, the the general plan seems to support it, and the and the form based code street regulating plan also seems to anticipate this going in as this, so it could go.
These are exactly, but but these are the questions that will come up in a public hearing.
Yeah.
And I think you, like it or not, whether or not you're, you know, obviously you're gonna look at it, but if you're telling us that we need to start looking at this now, but yet you're gonna look at details, it's kind of like, okay, well, we start time first and then figure it out, right, and I'm not saying that might have been valuable, because, yeah.
We're happy to waste your time.
But that's kind of like, so sorry, Bill, like, these are questions that we have, if you're gonna, you know, we're here for a work session. These are questions we're gonna have.
Yeah.
Just to say, this is own fit, well, yeah, I mean, it's it's on the thing for that property, but does a does a separate flag lot, that's a, that's not necessarily, you know, the hundred and fifty feet that I remember as being a minimum setback, and the next question does, okay, so we recognize that there's no regulation on single family homes, no regulation.
Right.
What level of regulation is acceptable in earth acceptable is in the form based village, right? Does all the rest of the code apply, or what what applies and where, and that's not something we visit. Because we mostly needed as bigger subdivisions that have come, because the only thing we look at.
Yeah, and you're right, and we do need to kind of wrap our head around how this might work, because most of the properties in these form based areas are smaller properties. The, so the codes that do still apply, so the form based zone is the zone that applies, but if you go to subdivide properties, the subdivision code will also apply. And so when that subdivision comes in, they're gonna need to show, if they get the rezone, they will need to show that they do comply with subdivision requirements and form based zone requirements. Both of them, before they could get approval. They wouldn't even be able to apply for a subdivision under form based zone, if the form based zone wasn't wasn't granted to them first. And so it's a, it is a question of chicken and egg, and you could always ask them to put together a concept plan to show how they might be able to comply with the zone. That's a reasonable request. The form based zone is designed to stand on its own, and so if you were to give him the zone and he didn't comply with the subdivision requirements and the zoning requirements is what it is.
The answer is no.
Yep, the answer is no.
And maybe, maybe this is an interesting test case, because there'll be others.
There will be.
Yeah, for sure.
Maybe it's a little unique, maybe it isn't, but maybe this should be, you know, taken a little further first. Answer some of these questions about flag lot, and some are probably easily answered and some aren't, and here you have a canal that's unique in there, but maybe it should go a little further and then come back.
Yeah. Yeah, would you be comfortable with it coming back with some of those details answered? In the same medium answer?
Whether, for me, it's like, you're you're, it's there, and it's a single family home, it's not unreasonable. I I do have heartburn that where do we draw the line on flag lots and things protruding out that crosses bigger sprawl?
Right.
Because that's a question I think that we as staff can answer and help resolve too.
Well, I think it's a question we need to address in code itself too, right, that needs to say, hey, like, form based village is this, and you know, it doesn't mean that it holds up, you know, automatically can sprawl this big, because that was never the intention.
Right, right.
Correct me, maybe I don't understand that the flag lot ordinances are intended to protect neighbors as well, right, so you don't get a lot of encroachments.
Backdoor stuff.
Stuff, is that right?
Yeah, that's right, or backyard front doors, yeah, that's, but the ordinance does allow flag lots as well. And if we go back and look at what was adopted, I know for the Ogden Valley, we said you have to have for the rest of the county, we said you have to have double the acreage of the zone in order to have a flag lot up to three acres, and if it's a zone that requires three acres or above, then it's just whatever the zone requires. That's how that flag lot was changed, or the flag lot standard was changed, and so in this particular case, if the standard is forty thousand square feet, maybe the flag lot has to have double that, so maybe this won't even be, if it's a flag lot, maybe the applicant needs to acquire a little bit more property in order to make this work. Another way that the applicant could potentially make this work is the the road, I don't remember what that road is, but it's on the north side. Yeah, what is that, twenty-seven right there? So twenty-seven hundred north, and that is that this road right here, there's always a potential for it to be extended now that we're gonna have to deal with whose whose property that might be on, but if the applicant has the ability to extend it on his property, that might be another possibility as well.
That's, yeah, just a couple of others, because we have two lots that are frontage on that fifty-six hundred east. And I don't know if that kind of is a little unique, because we wouldn't be taking one lot that, you know, only has frontage space on one lot, there's currently two lots that we have that both have that frontage space, so.
Including that skinny lot? So where where is twenty-five, personal twenty-five?
It's it's a.
It's a little sliver, it's hard to see, because it's.
To have acre, you can kind of see.
It kind of looks on the map like it's.
Yeah, it's kind of drawn funny on that map, but.
Forty or fifty feet wide?
I think.
It's the the assessor's office has it at, or the recorder's office has it at thirty-four?
So that's where I saw it, it looks like it's on that other driveway.
Yeah, that's right.
I think the aerial is shifted.
It's, but yeah, that's what I'm saying, you can't really go by what the aerial looks like. It's but yeah, that's what I'm saying, you can't really go by what the aerial looks like. It's probably.
The property land is probably actually more accurately right about here.
Yeah, in fact, uh.
There's a fence about here.
And you could kind of see the difference, here's the fence line right here. So you can see how far off the aerial is on where the property elections, so definitely don't take the gizmo as sort of a little accuracy, it's definitely not.
I have a question um on. Uh on why we're discussing the lot size right now, I thought when we originally were discussing. Form based and people applying for it, uh you had to own the property, but. There wa- I didn't think there was a size requirement, because that was about banking, like somebody could just go ahead and. Ask for the rezone, pay for the pay the application fee, ask for the rezone. So that they could get involved in this banking and the banking did get approved, so. Except for maybe some flag law definitions that we need to look up, why does the size of the lot actually matter? I thought it was. Not consequential.
Uh so the ordinance uh for rural residential does specify a minimum forty thousand square foot lot.
For rural residential, okay, okay, within within form base, okay.
Yeah, yep, you're right, and so uh let's just say this um this skinny parcel, um maybe it is a. Um shared private driveway, which we've just adopted that ordinance, so the applicant could potentially create a shared private driveway. And that would give the rear portion of this lot it the frontage that's necessary.
That's different than a flag lot?
It is different than a flag.
It amounts to the same thing, but it's a little a little bit of a legal nuance.
So the county requirement is if. This street or if if the shared private driveway on this parcel right here, for example, uh assuming that's what you want to do. If that would otherwise or should otherwise be a street to fulfill our street block requirements. Then we would work with the applicant to essentially um uh have him donate to the county an easement in favor of the county. That basically says if the county ever determines this needs to be a public street, um the applicant will convey it to the county. Um at that time, so it's essentially a deferred exaction of a street. Um and that, based on that, um if he wanted to divide this um north, south, so there's an east parcel and a and a west parcel. Uh the future commitment to provide a street would fulfill the requirement for.
So that's the difference between flag lot and what we're talking about here.
That's right.
Basically, flag lot is like, that's mine and it will always be mine and this is, oh, it could possibly be, okay. My general thoughts for is that. You with the form base standing on its own, you don't have to kind of tell us what you've got going on, like what you really want to do, but if you want to do a plot layout. Make it easy, you know, if your if your thought is, well, I want to split that, sell that house, build another lot back, because I like the property where I live. And I'm not being able to do it, but it might work if I do it this way, it might help, um it might hurt, it's up to you. Um I think that if at least the property itself can be reasonable without, in my opinion, without. But this is where it should be, there's not really objection, I don't think, in my mind for.
Um with it, it's in the form base, street regulating plan, slowly designs. Yeah, I mean, it may work, may work.
I agree as well.
Great.
Yeah.
Guys comfortable uh seeing this in a a public hearing your next meeting then?
Maybe not next meeting, because it's that one up in the valley. I thought Rick said he was trying to avoid public hearings and that.
He is, oh. Public hearing specifically, it may not be in your next meeting, but maybe the one after. Yeah, the there isn't one, no, it's the Western Weaver that has a work session before then, uh but. We do, so we are planning on having a planning commission meeting before that public meeting. If there are items that are really pressing, if it's an item that can wait, we're trying to push them.
But I mean, I would like to see a like, we've got ironed out what those. Form based allows, fly lots, form based allows.
Yeah, he's it sounds like he's got a little homework that you want him to do before he comes back for that public hearing anyway, right?
Charlie or?
The applicant.
I will, if he wants to, that's up to him.
Okay.
I think we need to also say, hey, wait, did we miss something here with fly lots? Just make sure that it fits, I mean, I I don't know, maybe there's something we want, I don't know, I just want to make sure, hey, wait, did we? Did we look at this, is it fully vetted?
Yeah, we're happy to uh sit down with the applicant, um maybe sketch some ideas out and then. Review the ordinance, kind of as a, as as you mentioned, Commissioner Barber, as a kind of a test case.
Because I'm in some senses, I'm like, great, if he wants to split it and he wants to build a house here, that's what he wants to do. You know, okay, but as long as it fits. That my my concerns are gonna be, okay, well, now we're extending that road and what color is that red? How does that fit? Does it? Generate more and more and.
No, that makes sense.
Sure.
This ship's held on this one, right? We'd have to change the.
That lot, yeah, the the one question is yes, the other one is, wait a minute, like flag lots, roads that we extend out from current zoning. Where does that line kind of go? Okay, this we this creates a, you're not in the zone, you have to change the street regulate.
And yeah, so those are the kind of questions.
Change it.
This would not have to change.
If he did the road.
Yeah.
If if he did a public road, then we would need to look at changing the street.
Exactly.
Well, if he did the shared private. Shared private driveway, he would.
Would not, correct.
Then it could just change, and that's my concern, it's like, well, wait a minute, let's. Kind of put a case around where those shared private driveways, so they don't go, well, now this is this big when it was intended to be this big in the general plan.
Gotcha.
You get my point?
Yeah.
On this one, I completely could pull the rug out, if we need to change the code, we can't change it before.
Oh, no, no, I just want to say, okay, like, well, if we're gonna do a shared private driveway, that does not extend.
That's whatever the original intent of that, yeah, yeah.
Who cares, it's, I don't want it to be, okay, now you just magically find a way around to extend the size of the.
Yep.
The form based thing area.
Yep, I think that that's a really good idea, um we're gonna have to deal with the same kind of question when. Uh the Sunnyfield folks come in, because they're gonna be proposing the law uh some roads that. Aren't on the street regulating plan, um and there'd be dead end or cul-de-sac roads and maybe those ones are just. Colored in when we go to make other amendments to the plan, because we already know what that's gonna be. Uh it's getting access from rural rural residential roads, so therefore everything that's in there should be rural residential. Right, but I think you're right, once we go outside of that polygon, so I've got the next parcel over highlighted, that's Elkhorn. And that we already know the first part of Elkhorn, with Elkhorn is the old Kobe branch, and we already know the first side of Elkhorn was already sold off to a developer. Um and I don't know who the Elkhorn folks are, but I have no reason to believe that they're not gonna sell off the next part to another developer at some point in the future. And if they were to pick up the the private shared lane thing and and run with it, would we be able to say no? That's a great question.
Not that we need to say no, but we need to make sure we know what we're.
Dealing.
Exactly.
Sort of condenses, this isn't an area we expect people to want to go into the form based zone.
Yep.
And I think you told us before, step one is get the form based zone. Step two is you come in for your your plan. In the form base zone.
True.
So for the applicant, he just gotta, before he jumps on the form based zone, make sure something will work.
Yeah, sure, for for his own, something, just, yeah, that's right.
But for our purpose, if the applicant's saying, I want to be in this own form based zone, we assume he knows what he's doing.
Yeah.
But yeah, but it's also legislative, so it doesn't mean we have, it doesn't mean we have to say yes.
Right, correct.
Clear. The public, you know.
But we set up this deal and said, okay, all these people are gonna be applying to this.
Yeah.
It'd be kind of weird if we said, well.
But that's, that, I mean.
Yeah, I have a question.
If the public doesn't want it and they, we can't take public out, that's what I want to say, it's like. Hey, look, if you guys got big problems with this, then you can, but that's.
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant, just from my own kno- knowledge, like, have you been out shopping? To purchase uh development rights, if you answer.
Um, we talked a couple of numbers about it, just kind of preliminary discussions. Um but no, nothing. Nothing firm, nothing concrete. But yeah, I don't know.
So when you're you looking at it from the real world, does it look doable, is it?
Um, I mean, it would depend on, I mean, it's kind of like um. You know, a house, there's, there's probably someone, you can have an ugly house, but someone might like it, you know. You have some people who would never transfer development, right? Some people might say, sure, you know, you can. Come to some mutual agreement, so I think. Seems like just a matter of finding the right person who has property they have no intent to develop and is willing to. Transfer it along the night to you, but we haven't found that person yet, but obviously I'm pursuing this because I. Under the assumption that there is somebody, some rolling area that would like it, they were all scenic and. And keeping with the general plan.
Just as a reminder for you guys, uh once he's zoned the form base, he can't get a subdivision until he has that right. Yeah, so they'll get the rezone if you guys um or if the commissioner ultimately gives it to him, but that's a recommendation for you guys. And then after that, that gives him all the freedom he needs to go chase down all those development rights. Um record a transaction with that other landlord or whoever that is. Um and once that's recorded, then he's got the right to essentially apply for that subdivision and and move forward.
So the last time we asked, I think the answer was there had never been a T D R exchange between unrelated parties, is that still the case?
Uh related as in in the family?
No, I mean. You know, so it's a good case, one person going and chopping and finding somebody. Wants to sell, right, versus. You know, within a business entity or business structure.
I want to say we've had one uh for an eighty. But no, none others other than that one, and I'll have to do the research again, just to make sure I know for sure that that one actually didn't come through.
Okay, well, generally, did you have any other?
No, it was just briefly mentioned the homework items, but from what I was hearing, the homework would relate primarily to. The flag law consideration versus share private driveway, that was kind of the only item I heard in terms of. Potential things that might come up.
You guys agree with my 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 thoughts, if you have, it depends on what your plan is, in my opinion, it's like, hey, if you're like. Trying to build a house, sometimes you want to tell people that, then I think it'd be great to have a plot, but if you don't want to, that's great. I I I do want Charlie to look at it, but I don't know that. I I don't know that you have, there's anything that I have to see.
Yeah, I mean, I I kind of agree that at this point. Because we could. Put something out there that. It turns out doesn't fly, and so I'm a little worried if I put something out there and it has problems with it. I mean, at this point, it seems like it's just getting to the form base zone. Yeah, it seems like it's just getting to the form based zone and then I can start. You know, addressing flag lot issues or share private driveway. I would be nervous if I put something out there that had flaws with it that I didn't, you know, hadn't been anticipated, but.
I I guess my thought, what I mean by this is, if you said, if you just took a picture that, like, this was your intent to just split that and put a house. And you wanted to tell people that, and I don't know what your intent is, but it happens, it would be like, oh, well. I don't know that many people would have objection to that, that's the scary thing about the form base is it's the unknown. Like, we, you know, in some of these higher dense areas, you can do a lot of things, and so it's best to know what it is you're trying to do. That way we can go, oh, well, we can, great, we're happy for them, great. You don't have to, so it's it's really, I the only homework I I think is, hey, let's verify our. Our code works, what's flag and. And a shared private driveway, I think that's the big thing, and if you want to work with Charlie, I think that'd be wise to be like, hey, where does this go? Then maybe even in the public hearing, you want, if you wanted to say, hey, this is kind of what I've come up with.
Right, I think it'd be appropriate maybe to sit down and have you kind of tell us how you kind of think it could be divided or what your desire is, maybe have. One, two, maybe even three potential change or al- alternatives that to create a two lot subdivision. And then we can give you guys a full analysis. Yeah, as in, in a perfect wor- world, if the surveyor agrees with all these measurements. Our ordinance works like this, and I just want to make sure it's clear that. If a surveyor comes in and there's just something in there that we didn't understand during the sketch plan side of things. Um you guys aren't feeling like we're pulling the rug out from under you guys, and so. Just do a, we'll do a preliminary uh precursory uh review of the ordinance, making sure you guys understand how it works, making sure the applicant understands how it works. Giving him his options and um having him tell us what he would rather have his options be as well, and we'll come to you guys and show you that, so you can see. Some potential alternatives that could go.
Yeah, I mean, my my corporate, my thought is, I mean, we want you to do whatever you want to do, however, you know, what's within the legal guidelines. However, it sometimes like the Sunnyfield Farms one, they said, we want to preserve this open space, and this is how we're doing, they kind of gave us an idea. What was it looking at, so it kind of said, okay, I see. And that's, that's like I say, the challenge of the form basis. What has we got here?
If he came in today and said, here's my thought plan, here's where I want to divide it. Want to get the form based zone, we can't make this switch to the form based zone conditional on him following his plan.
Right, that's correct.
So, why go there?
It is chicken and egg, right? Like I say, in a public hearing setting, it might help, you know.
Just to address public concerns.
Yeah. Because you might say.
That would be when you make friends with your neighbors.
Yeah. Always a good idea. Always a recommendation I have for the developers, go knock on some doors and just tell them what's happening, it's. Sometimes when they get that notice from the county, even though we're required to send it ten days in advance, USPS gets it to them. Two days before and then they don't have enough time to.
And and those people are, what was it, within five hundred feet or what was?
We do notify people within five hundred feet, um. Maybe beneficial just to talk to your immediate neighbors, I don't know if you guys have to do it every month with five hundred, but the less people. Uh come to the planning commission in that hearing and. Vocalize their fear of extra development, uh it's a better option.
And that's my point, maybe an unnecessary.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Because I I am his neighbor. And I like, you know, but um so I did have some views, and one of them is is just what you said, because the form based zone. Is just kind of, I I read it and I read it and a little bit and I still don't quite understand. Like for the Sunnyfield development. I thought, well, okay, foremost, based on has commercial and it's still a major commercial, even better. And and I read that, and I read the S D R ordinance, and I couldn't quite pinpoint the answer. Are they allowing S D Rs in a form based zone? And that would. That would completely change our input, and my other question is. This is a village. Shows a village of eight, wanting to lot, so. Are all the landowners in the future going to be allowed to change to the form based zone? I mean, according to the colors on the map, they could, but where does it stop? Does it stop? Because there's open space all behind that, so are are we on the fringes or is it? Can it only grow out a quarter of a mile or like where? So I think that's where my neighbors would be afraid, first of all, the. The broadness of the, if that's a word, the form based zone, like wondering what's gonna, what's it gonna look like and. Um. Where's it gonna stop and what's allowed is. And you, I know I haven't been to these meetings, but I'm sure you've heard a lot. Um grief about the S T Rs, because you're, you keep working on it. But it was in our neighborhood where they had a shooting, that's an extreme example, I know. But um where there was an S T R at the bottom of our subdivision where they. They rented it out for a party and there was a shooting one night and the next night, and my daughters were walking by thirty minutes before that shooting. The second shooting, and so. I really not a fan of S T Rs, um especially not in my neighborhood, I honestly. I did not know I was in a dirt zone, even though I live in a neighborhood with one of their lots. Um we consider our neighborhood broader than that, and you know, to walk around our neighborhood with the big open space. With the cemetery and where Sunfield wants to develop. I mean, that's where we live in the valley too, pretty open spaces, so. Essentially, if we're already in a village, named a village, then we're kind of caught there. With just expand, expanding. With the form based zone, just that can just expand out, so that's that's hard. For us and that, you know, that have lived there a while, I mean. So that was my concern, what's allowed in that area and how far out are we going to keep going with form based?
It's true.
You should put, I would like to, you should, you need to attend the county commission meeting for when they address the street regulating plan and express your concerns.
Yeah.
Sprawl.
Yeah, absolutely.
Couple of other things, how do you want to address?
Yeah, so I could. Yeah, so I could.
Address the sho- the short term question and I, the sprawl, I don't, I don't know that I have a good answer for.
Yeah, um, so I I can just give you the, some information, but I would also welcome, uh, yourself, your neighbors. Uh, maybe you could new put together a little meeting with the neighborhood so you can address these on the front end. I'd love to have that conversation first. Um, cause a lot of the fears, um, are are just based on the unknown. So just to give you the known, um, in this area of the form based zone, the word village is a misnomer. Uh, the village is really where the mixed use and the commercial areas are. This is single family residential. And so the colors on the map, um, represent the type of land use that is allowed. Um, and it's just rural, rural residential, one acre lots.
Yeah, one acre, yeah. I didn't realize that was I thought we were, because there are a lot to the northeast and south that are lots larger than one acres.
Yeah.
And so what I'm learning here tonight is they can potentially be changed to one acre lots on all of those.
So can anyone, any.
To one acre?
With the zone change.
What this is, is this is a general reason. So anyone even in a three acre could ask for a change to a one acre. It has to go through the same process. It has to go through the same process, meaning a public hearing and a request. So if I was in a three acre area and I wanted to go to a one, I can submit for it. Same thing here. The general idea is that you, this is this is saying that in this area, there's a higher chance of it being approved.
Right, okay. It doesn't mean that it's a slam dunk. It it really is legislative and it comes down to um, what the applicant is bringing to the table to present to the planning commission. Planning commission can hear all the neighbors say, we really hate this idea.
What is the county commission?
That's right. And the planning commission can make a recommendation, ultimately the county commission will make a final decision. On the subject of S T Rs, S T Rs are not allowed in single family area, whether it's in a form base or.
So it's single family area that.
Single family, only single family, one acre lots up on these streets. If you get closer to the village area, that changes. Um, village area being the square around the park.
Yeah.
Um, it changes to a little bit more high density and commercial. But up where you guys are, um, the the most dense it'll get up there unless we change the street regulating plan at some point in the future. Most that's it'll get is one acre. And it ends where the existing streets in the form based village are. It ends there. So, um, the only way that it's going to be expanded beyond that is if the county changes the street regulating plan, which I agree with our chair, um, that's when the county commission looks at street regulating plan changes. That's a really appropriate time for people to be involved and say, hey, we don't want this to be spelled out like this. We would like to keep it compact. And that was outrageous.
Right now.
Yeah.
Not in your neighborhood, but.
Oh, I was gonna say, this has kind of the dotted arrow going up. Is that proposed street?
That is a proposed street and that street will, um, hopefully at one point, if we can work with the landowners, um, connect to COVID ranch. But the color of that right now is open space.
Right. And is that under, would we find out when that's under questioned?
Yes.
And can residents oppose that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, cause that would definitely change your neighborhood. If any of you have been on the pathway, it's really awesome. I use it almost daily for to ride a bike. But yesterday, especially when I was walking with my friend, talking, and we stopped to talk to a neighbor, we compared to each other because we're right along the highways.
Yeah.
And so that's why a lot of people, not only just in our neighborhood, but in other neighborhoods, walk that roof, we call it a loop.
Yeah.
And that changes when you add, you know, thirty more homes, whatever the problem goes around and change their lots to form based or one acres. It completely changes that feel and that neighborhood. So and I, I probably, if I was in your position, I would probably do the same thing.
Well, I mean, to be honest, another reason is now that pretty to the west is done the way it is, that house that was very, is on a very quiet street at the moment, is going to suddenly be on a very busy street with eighteen more.
Yeah.
And and, you know, before kids, we don't want a house that's fifteen feet from a busy street.
Yeah.
But anyway.
Yeah.
Was it, was there any other questions that I didn't answer that made your concern?
Um. Because I haven't done my homework yet, what does that mean, street regulating? What have you said?
So a a form based zone has a street regulating plan and the street regulating plan is the document that the chair is looking up right now. That's the street regulating plan.
Okay. Yeah, I I pulled it up online.
Yeah, so that's, that's his property right here. I'm assuming you read your local law.
I'm sure.
Right there, okay. Yeah, these these green streets, it looks you know, sort of rural residential one acre lots.
So they're working on this to change this a little bit now right now?
There's, there's. Sort of change right here. But not anything here, right? Look at this.
Okay, sorry.
But this, if you get on the county's website, this, I don't know where to find this. I've looked, I found it before.
Yeah. So if you actually go to the, uh, zone map, um, it'll be one of the links on this. And I can, if you give me your, uh, contact information, I'm happy to shoot it over to you.
Okay.
And we do so, and again, happy to talk with the neighbors who have some current concerns, because we have the same concern, especially about S T Rs. Um, I want to make sure that those don't go into single family residential areas. They need to stay neighborhoods, uh, community oriented neighborhoods.
Yeah. That one and the they probably just don't know whether this or a street reviewing whatever where it's one acre lots.
Yeah, and they're not in until they're rezoned. But that is, the street regulating plan is essentially the plan for the future. So if somebody were to come and ask for a rezone, that would be the guidance, um, that my official look at. Again, doesn't doesn't mandate that my mission makes the change to form base. It just helps the commission see what has been.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Um, turning the future, I think we should look at maybe defining sides of these things.
Uh, putting a, putting an edge on it.
A better edge.
I I have, uh, I have suggested that, um, to our friends upstairs and so far they're resisting the idea of putting, uh, or we call them urban growth boundaries. Um, a lot of cities have urban growth boundaries, saying this is as far as development will occur. And beyond that, it's just going to be essentially open space or agricultural property or whatever.
Rule.
Um.
Well, I I guess more what I'm saying generally is we've got arrows pointing up, but grows this, right? So at what point does does this become? You know, everywhere it will occur, right, in this plan? Why are we doing that? We 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 identified it as a dense, less dense, and and now they pointed out, I mean, we're starting right away. We're already, I mean, this is the second one, right? We haven't even had anybody guide into it yet. Uh, I mean, we have Sunnyville, right? But everybody wants to make it bigger before it's even.
Yeah.
We have one version.
That the arrow pointing to the north, um, is o- open space. So there isn't anything that's n- no development is intended to be proposed alongside of that road. That is purely for the intention of creating street connections, because there is only one route through that area.
And where do you stop? The, okay, that's an outside than Mormon's village. Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
We never, we didn't really define, we have a circle on the map, but it's always like, well, that's just a circle.
Right.
And we never said this is it, but the general plan was very specific that these areas, not these areas.
Right, right. Um, as you look at it, only those areas that are not the three acre or the open space would be areas that are, that may potentially change. So if you look at the street regulating plans, we do have show giant three acre streets, um, on them. Uh, and so everything else uh, would be potentially subject to change for form base. There's no motivation for someone who is along a three acre street to ask for a form based rezone. But I'm more than happy to put together some boundaries for these, for the form based areas.
It appears to me the elephant in the room is we got the idea, oh, let's give these development rights and keep the valley open and preserve all this open space. This will be great, have all this open space. But then there came out a lot of thought on, well, it'll just go into villages. But now we're starting to look at the villages, the impact there, this can be very dense. This isn't rural, this is city. And I think it's gonna, city gonna be, and you were telling us the existing villages that are talked about are not sufficient to take all the development rights from the other area. So where do they go?
So.
And we can't reconcile the two.
I would push back a little bit.
It's gonna be very dense.
Right.
Here and impact. It looks like this.
I would push back just a little bit on the idea that we didn't put a thought into that.
There was.
A lot of thought.
Maybe not public focus on it.
I I would agree with that. Through the general plan process, the idea was let's save the open space. Well, where do we put the density? We put them in the villages. Okay, but as soon as we start talking about putting density in villages, the neighbors come out and say, that's not what we wanted. We wanted the village to be over there or over there, over there, over there. And so nobody wants to implement the general plan. Right, we want to stay the same.
Yeah.
And staying the same means that elk corn goes to one unit every three acres. Uh, and then the next open space goes to one unit every three acres, and the next open space goes to one unit.
Well, I think what you just hit was the bigger concern. I mean, there I mean, I think people direct their heads around village areas, but the concern is, could elk horn get rezoned as rural residential? And then suddenly that's all one acre lots going on, you know, like through the whole valley. And that's why the boundaries would be important, a more strict.
Because roads, because weeds are all as you said, we've put it, we've grew with grains.
Right.
Well, now they're becoming a real road and it's becoming, well, now this is a new road, it should be green too.
Right, yeah.
It's gonna sprawl.
Our neighbors, you know, just keep going.
So the answer should have been, wait a minute, we're gonna put the brakes on there and keep the open space. The density is gonna stay out there in the open space instead of constantly creating it in the village.
That's, that's the, that that's right.
The rub.
So I've got something.
Necessarily. I'm not saying that. What we, what we're saying is we have no defined, this is it.
Yeah, then if you, they, this is there.
Then, then they have buildings in these higher density centers.
That right there said, you can change the boundaries.
That's true, but that, the whole point of this was to say, it's gonna be high dense around, for example, spice or the store, right? The valley market, right? That was the point of this. And and so that that's the art, one of the arguments with the changes, planets like, well, you've got all these development rights, we've got places to put them, but now we want to move them to where it's just easier to develop. But well, I'm sorry it's harder, but the plan is to move them here so we can save open space and not destroy it.
Yeah.
So it's not that we don't have space, it's that we aren't it's easier to develop in an open field than it is in a place that is harder to develop.
I hear public feedback about what? Multi-story, multi-family apartments. I work in the old town, even. I don't want that.
Yeah, we we hear the same thing. And it's a it's a question of having cake and eating it too. Right. That's gotta be one of the other.
You also have to unwilling landowner to be able to rezone their property into form based zone to allow all these density rights to go here. So everything has to, all the pieces of the puzzle have to match up.
Have to fit together.
For this to work.
That's right.
But the T D R market has to work and so far it doesn't exist. So no one really has any idea. Yet it's gonna work or not. It's just theory at this point.
The other thing I have, we we've got, we've got multi-family units, higher density, we won't preach and on the south side of the lake. And we, instead of saying, let's build more there, we're saying, let's do it in open space. I mean, that's like, that's the heartburn I have.
We have suggested building more in both of those locations and, uh, south side of the lake. I don't know if you remember that conversation, but that did not go well.
In that one corner.
That one corner.
But that.
I remember you all, I remember many conversations where there was discussion on the market will dictate, the market will dictate. So, I mean, us trying to dictate where these things are going, i- it sounds count counter to what I've heard in previous meetings.
Um, let me kind of show you guys, uh, on the map here. Hard to see my cursor. So the boundary right now is limited to so this dark green, that's one year for three acres. This is the same thing that the three acre zone is, right?
Notice where you're putting that. I'm sorry, this is exactly where they want to put the yellow.
Let me, let me try again.
I just did it, just right there.
Sorry, so this dark green is one acre. And every single one of these village areas have a, have a limit to where the rural residential, the one acre goes. Beyond that, it is one three, which is essentially the three acre zone. So here on the periphery here or in the open space or for the sake of today's conversation here or here, for example, all of that, there's no expectation for us to see any of that go to the board base, because there's no incentive or motivation for a landlord to do that. So you do have a boundary around.
You would just have to essentially connect the dots.
Yeah.
In a way, or put a little radius to the dots.
Right, which if you remember. And it's on mesh. If what? If we change it to the new form base, then it's all.
Then there is no three acre.
There, that went away and.
The one that's currently being reviewed is what you're saying.
The.
Where new town and old town come.
Oh, where they come together.
Well, it just makes up one.
Yeah, basically get rid of all the dark green.
Yeah.
And makes it so that there is no mesh. It's, it's all high density or higher density.
Right, well, you can see here along, uh, one sixty-six, that is one unit three acre. So even that changes.
As of six now, the one that changes, we've got new town and old town making a one down.
Yeah, getting it very close. Yeah, I, with the, with this changing here. I agree. Yeah. Uh, this won't change here, but I don't disagree that it's gonna look, especially if these goes up to one acre, it's gonna look a lot more like they're one of the same. I think you're gonna see commercial style village activity. Um, we've put a max of forty feet on those buildings. Um, and when they're closer to the street, even lower, and then they'll go down to one acre to the acre and then back up again. Even if this does change to that commercial. But you're not wrong, that that just gets it one step closer and maybe the next one will go closer, closer and closer. I I can respect the concern very much. With that said, um, right now, we kind of have those growth boundaries. In your next meeting, when we go to the public, um, the planner right now, I didn't, is Rick here? I didn't really understand, um. He was the one who asked for that notice to be sent out. So maybe he just forgot that he did that. But the first part of the meeting is intended to be a discussion about sewer infrastructure and the relationship of the general plan to if the infrastructure. Um, the second part of the discussion is intended to be a, a visual preview of what sit, uh, a hundred percent success on T D Rs would look like. Fifty percent success on T D Rs would look like and zero percent success on T D Rs would look like. So you're gonna see three scenarios visually depicted, um, where you can see if we're really good at wiping out or buying, I should say, buying all development rights on all open spaces and clustering them in these village areas, how the valley would look in that case. Or next step, you'll see it if we're fifty percent successful, which I think that's probably a more realistic target.
Why are we doing this? Why?
I think it's.
They they made it very clear to us that that it doesn't, that they're gonna do that, what they're planning to do. So to try and say, hey, this, like, we're trying, you're trying to sell us the general plan when we were clearly told that we can't revisit the general plan.
Um, I think they want to remind the general public what the plan was based on.
I don't understand how this current one that we have doesn't need the general plan.
I I think it does.
So why do we have to go above and beyond the general plan?
I don't.
Let me ask, this one, this one might sting a little, Charlie, so I'm prepping you. Why didn't you say that in the meeting? When that was being brought up, that we weren't following the general plan? Why didn't you say, no, the current plan against the general plan?
Which meeting?
The work session.
Oh, uh.
Yeah.
I, uh, it doesn't sting.
Part of the heartburn that we have with that.
Okay, um, we have talked to the planning or the county commissioners about how the current plans do conform to the current general plan. Um, that has been part of that dialogue. I think what they're looking at is where do we find opportunity for those transfers to actually occur? Uh, under realistic infrastructure circumstances. And so that's why I think in this next meeting, um, the whole point is discuss where that sewer is gonna go and where the likelihood of additional development pressure is gonna come from, uh, the geographic area where it's gonna come.
And where do you know where the sewer is going? And where do you know where the sewer's going? But the sewer was defined where it was going by a developer that's driving.
Not by the general.
Not by the general public, but by a developer. That sounds like the county's wanting to invest in that sewer line as well.
But the county, it's public, our money, our money is going into it.
And then we gotta hit what, we got nitrates and pine views, or are we gonna hook up all the existing infrastructure first and clean the nitrates? Or we hook up. That would be nice. Now, I don't know where you've heard that the county taxpayers are gonna be paying for this.
No, it's, it's taxpayer money.
ARPA funds.
Government.
ARPA funds, right.
Right, so that's not the county's money, it's somebody else's money that they're going to dole out.
Yep.
But those commissioners didn't put that, that money in themselves.
You're right.
So that's taxpayer money.
I see what you're saying, yeah, federal dollars.
Federal taxpayer money being handed out, which okay, good, but recognize what it is.
Yeah.
And what it isn't, so as far as your iterations of what it would look like at a hundred percent, fifty percent, zero, I think it's fun to look at stuff like that. My concern is that you're selling. An ideology that may not ever exist and people start to buy into it, like back then and I wasn't at these meetings. People were buying into something that so far has not materialized.
I, I made, I made that exact same statement at one of those uh, open house meetings when we were doing the general plan. I, I, I told members of the public, I think that you guys have been sold a silver bullet, that there's a reason up to twenty sixteen it hasn't materialized.
Yeah, so we just need to be, um, I like the idea of that meeting up in the valley, but I'm afraid. That we're, I say we, the county is going to be. Have some agenda, they're going to push forward that may not be based in reality or may not be based in. In, you know, what's going on today and likely in the future, and the T D R process is totally un. But you know, transferring density works amongst. Inter, you know, it's the same development groups or related development groups that works. For them, at this point, I guess. But it hasn't been out there saving farmland.
Not yet.
Not yet, or maybe it will, maybe it won't.
And uh, if we save all this farmland, how's that gonna affect nitrates and pine view?
Yeah, it's a great question, it's a very good question. Uh, the other side of saving farmland is water, right? You have to keep all that water on that farmland in order to keep it. Harmful, uh, and so now you gotta double ding on water cuz someone, if you sell all the development rights off. All that waters or that water's not following the development rights, and so that developer's gotta figure out where's water is gonna come from. So yeah, it's a, it's a double, double ding kinda situation, I, I don't disagree.
Yeah, I, I'm concerned at that meeting. About selling the public or telling the public things. That are not. Current. I think the public needs to know more current things, like you weren't familiar with the form-based village. Situation and neither was I eight months ago very much. I, I would feel better about informing the public about the realities today.
Mm-hmm.
What's been done, what's being done, what's gonna happen foreseeably in the future. You know, the sewer project that everybody has seen, you know, how's that gonna roll out? Where isn't it going to go?
Right.
It sounds like.
We have more say.
We should have more say.
Yeah, but is it gonna clean up the nitrates or just take care of new ones?
How does it jive with what those? Uh, consultants came up with or not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I think the public should be better informed about realities. Versus what ifs and maybe. So it's fun to look at, but not, doesn't help the public today when they hear things about what's going on in their neighborhood. They need to know that.
Yeah, so we will be uh, providing that kinda detail as well. There, there's a few different things that we're gonna be uh, looking at. Uh, number one, where we were in twenty sixteen versus where we are now, uh, in terms of what lots have been developed. And so kinda highlighting on a map where the development has been occurring. Um, and then number two, where form-based zones are hopefully intended to occur. Um, where they have occurred so far, so how close are we in following that plan? Um, and then the next part of it would be that hypothetical, uh, that I hear your concerns about, I, I understand your concerns. I think it's important for, for landowners to live in these form-based areas to realize. If we are successful, and maybe it is a big if, and we need to communicate to the public that it is a big if, but if we are successful. There might be some open spaces preserved in order to, or, or if we do these transfers. And so I think what the county commission would like. Their objective in getting uh, in, in this meeting is helping the people who live in these potential form-based areas understand. That it might be a little more density, but it is for a higher purpose, there are areas that are worth saving. Um, and the reason for the three scenarios is because there is gonna be a range, there's gonna be a degree. In there that where maybe we're only twenty-five percent, maybe we're only ten percent successful. We're gonna be at least one percent successful because we've already got some, some T D Rs moving, right? Um, so maybe we're only gonna be one percent successful, but.
That would be, I would never show a hundred percent cuz that's un, that's impossible. I would, I would also show already, what I would show for sure are where the land trusts have already had an impact because they certainly have.
They have, that's already on the map.
And I would. You know. Hopefully the county will turn around and resell those, but. That's important for the.
If the land trust owns those, county can't, it's not ours to sell.
Right.
So, I, I think.
But there is potential for other, anyway.
Yep, you're right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I, hopefully it's gonna go right to where, uh, what you're looking for. And if, yeah, you're right, if uh, probably not gonna help anyone to see a hundred percent success. Cuz that is un, unattainable, uh, that would be relying on everyone selling their rights.
Seventy-five percent is wild speculation.
Yeah, in fact, uh. My anticipation than that is to show some kind of a, a, a graph or a, a scale that shows level of predictability.
And I would be straight up with the community at, at that point, if none had happened. If one had or two had happened, I'd say it, I would not need anyone to believe that this is something that it isn't.
Yeah.
You know, this is a many years after this and it still hasn't happened. Other than within, you know, closed networks, so I think we need to be as honest with the public as possible.
Yeah, um. I agree, I think that uh, the way to go. Okay.
Introduction to the current general plan, twenty sixteen. This general plan update is intended, one, to verify their self-sufficient public support to carry forth the vision. And policy direction to the past planning efforts. And two, consolidate past efforts into one plan. So, I keep wondering if the public understood today. That whole bunch of density is gonna go into some neighborhood. And they're not gonna be rural anymore, they're gonna be cities. In order to preserve some farmland out there somewhere, would they support this general plan?
Great question.
And when I sort of asked that-ish. Direction to the commissioners in writing. I don't think they were pleased to have that question asked of them, to have the public have any more input on the general plan. Right?
Yeah, um, I do, I, they want us to have that open house to have the dialogue with the public. Um, which uh, we do have every intention of having.
Having dialogue or are we just presenting?
So there will be a presentation and then we'll have a public open house with boards, uh, that people can kinda browse through. And at that time, they'll be able to make comments, uh, they could write their comments right on the.
No question and answer in a. In a forum setting.
Not a, not a town hall forum, um, it'll be a more one-on-one or one-on-group, um, in the open house area. There, there's reason for that, um, things get really hot in town hall settings, um, and uh, uh, crowds tend to whip each other up. But people.
Didn't it get a little hot last time when you did that format?
Well.
The last time you were in the valley, you did these like boards and, and uh, each of you stood in a different place in the library. And I thought it got a little heated that, that way as well.
Uh, it did, definitely not as heated as the uh, town hall style uh, conversations. Uh, so yeah, we can't say it won't get heated at all, it, it certainly will.
And maybe we, maybe we should help make sure that this, maybe we, can I ask that the planning commission, we, as we'll be there, at least for. Which we should, we have the plan, we, we should try and help make that not. What I don't want is, let me, let me just put out there, I don't want them to cancel meetings in the valley because something happens again. So maybe we can somehow help.
Yeah.
Facilitate a better conversation.
I would love to have you guys' help.
And I don't know how we do it, but if we could help facilitate a better conversation.
Mister Chair, do we have anything else for the applicant? He's, he's looking like he's maybe got other commitments.
He's good. We're done there, I think, so then are we?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who is running?
Um. Like what's individuals running it? I think it'll be Rick. We've reached out to the uh, to Wolf Creek to do the initial presentation as well. Um, I think I'll probably be doing the. Wolf Creek.
Wolf Creek Water.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, sorry. Wolf Creek Water and Sewer, yeah, sorry, not a developer.
That's gonna be fun.
Yeah. No, yeah, the point is to show that even though a developer has started asking the questions, the county's investing the money in Wolf Creek Water and Sewer. Um, as opposed to. Yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry, I just bothered by the county taking credit for handing out taxpayer money.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, the nation is investing in, um, Wolf Creek Water and Sewer, um. Uh, you're right, uh, you're not, you're not wrong, there are some private interests that are definitely, um. Pointing this in a certain direction. Uh, however, the point is, is that without those private interests, sewer would have never been brought down to the, the village area. And if sewer's never brought down to the village area, it doesn't develop.
The printer should take credit, right? They gotta run it in the planning press.
We took money for you. I R S the right, you know, I, I don't make any money, so.
We, we invited President Biden to come and explain why, why they've been messing all the bodies. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, if this can be couched in terms of. We're working to. Serve the public and this, we're not here to ram something and throw. Here is what we found out as we try to implement this general plan that. Was based on a lot of public input in the valley.
Are we here, are this, are we here to listen? That's the question I have for you. Are you gonna be there to listen or is it just?
Oh.
The county commission has told us to teach this and we're going to do this.
I'm gonna listen as well, the county commission is interested in getting those comments, um, and, and running through them. Some of them may not be relevant to what the county commission wants to, is trying to make decisions on, but others of them may help very much steer the, the decision.
So with that being said, if that's the case, we should be able to help with that, I would think. Especially if you're gonna have separate conversations, not just one giant conversation.
Yeah.
I would hope that we can try and visit with those that we know.
Rick will be good at kinda presenting things in a call.
He is good. The partner and I, I guess what I'm worried about is he was that, he was there and was good last time, but we still had problems, so.
Those problems existed because somebody went and got the P A system where we purposely didn't have a P A system out.
Right.
Um, and that wasn't anybody's fault except for the person.
Me, I don't getting this. Those people get the century.
I didn't know that we were valid.
Be at that meeting?
Uh, I don't know yet, that's uh, it's up in the air.
So I think any successful meeting, you have to know who your audience is, and I think. Obviously, this audience will be diverse, but you're gonna have a chunk of people who are not super well-informed on the details and nuance. And then you're gonna have a bunch of people who know a lot, that you're not gonna be able to. With, you know, the dog and pony show that everything's beautiful and this is what's gonna happen, it's all nice and. General plan, it's always gonna be open and green, but there's a lot of folks. Understand that that hasn't happened or it's happened, it's happened for different reasons.
Right.
And that this general plan is a good direction, but it's, it's not, it's not an absolute.
Yeah.
And if you approach the audience that way, I think you're gonna be. So my caution is to maybe, maybe test the presentations on this diverse seven-person group. Get your feedback individually. And maybe adjust accordingly.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't mind that idea at all. I'll talk to Rick, see uh, how he feels. We'd have to have a special meeting in order to do that.
Well, no, you could just send out slides or whatever.
Easy.
And the talking points. You get my comments back, take it or not, we got it.
Perfect.
Seven different sets of comments back and uh, whatever.
One of the questions that we are gonna be asking the public is would they support uh, a ballot initiative for uh, open space? Uh, open space bond of some sort, um, I know the county commissioners are interested in whether or not. The valley residents would wanna put that on a, on a ballot or if the county commissioner should put it on a ballot.
I heard that discussed before a long time ago and the devil's in the detail there.
Is there a way to, is there a ballot initiative to do a new general plan?
No, oh, possible. Probably.
How hard is that to do?
That's almost called city, but you know.
I know to me, but essentially that's what the drive to create a city is about. A different general plan, if you boil it down.
That's right, and it usually is, the most jurisdictions are kinda created based off of concerns over planning. Uh, Bluffdale, Harriman, Plain City, uh, uh, West Haven, Hooker, uh, it was all based on development. Which again, uh. I've had good conversations with commissioners, uh, as well as others in the county, and if the valley does decide to incorporate, I. Don't think there'd be significant pushback at all from county, it, it would actually be probably beneficial to the folks in Western River.
Question is not necessarily that because. The question is, is there, is there such a thing to do that, have a ballot initiative? Basically say, hey, we do want that.
I think so.
How does that work? Does it have to be the whole county? I would imagine it would.
I think so as well, and that's the challenge, um, including the incorporated areas. So my understanding of initiatives is, um, there has to be a certain percentage of voters. Who sign on to the initiative in order to get it on the ballot, so very similar to creating municipalities, right? But because it's countywide, um, I don't. Could be wrong, but my understanding is it is everyone who lives within the county, all two hundred and, well, all. Eighty-seven thousand voters, registered voters, um, not just those who live within the unincorporated area and not just those who live in the valley. So that might be harder, um, referendum is the same way. Uh, you, you can get a referral of any decision that the county commission makes on a, on a, a ballot. You just have to have a certain amount of the people who voted for the commission. To agree to that.
We better move on to the next item, we, we're not got much time left.
Okay. Uh, can I just ask if you have any questions and then if you don't, we can just get it on the next one.
So I read, I read through it, um, pretty much the whole thing scanned through it. I saw generally the changes which were in accordance, I thought. With our last discussion, the, the sizing that you dropped forward and my takeaway. Was that it now fits way better with the intent. To have agritourism be really agritourism. And if you're doing something that isn't, either there's a way for you to do it on a small scale or you're just. But I think it's way better now and I think the changes reflect last kind of scenario.
Did we, there was, your question was about children's camp.
Oh, that was just a statement.
Did we get that figured?
You said it could go either way, I just was reading it and I wasn't sure which way I.
I think if somebody came and asked for overnights, we'd be obligated to say that they can. So if that's something you'd rather not see in a children's camp on these smaller parcels, then we say children's day camp.
I do define children as not in that scenario.
Eighteen and younger, so it could be teenagers.
Agritourism thing to me is.
We could go lower.
Is the monastery is a perfect example of agritourism. Went to the, whatever they call it, uh, farm rich market on Saturday, it was great. That's agritourism, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Nobody's staying the night there.
Right.
Is that, is that agritourism or is that?
Well, we.
The.
Because that part of the valley, I'm just guessing, you know, what part of valley is that?
That's a.
A general change.
Uh, F V three for most of it, yes.
Okay, so does agritourism apply?
Um, it does, yeah, no, F V three is, F V three and A V three are the.
Is that a farm stand or is that?
I'd have to look and see what their approval is, if they even have an approval.
Okay, so here's a more recent one, I read in the valley paper. Last issue about a place on the five hundred south. Towards that's doing, they're selling raw milk, they're selling aids, they're doing education. Towards that suing, they're selling raw milk, they're selling eggs, they're doing education, they've got cattle, they got chickens. And so my first question was, I know where they said, but my first question is, you just ride by, it's just a house barn. Oh, and they have a kiosk at this particular road. Was that approved as agritourism? Because they're doing pretty much all sorts of stuff in here. They even have an R V. Up against the house permanently moored with a separate set of stairs.
Um, if it's not one of the three that.
It was in the Valley paper, last issue was a big write-up on it. What was it about the? They're doing, they were advertising, they're selling raw milk, eggs, cattle, chickens, they do education. Um, I didn't see. I've driven, my, I've been going back by the place a hundred times, never paid attention, and then I. I read the article and the next time I drove by, I go, wow, they do have an R V butted up against the house with stairs. And otherwise, it just looks like a house in the barn. But was that approved?
If it's not one of the three that we've already mentioned to you, then my understanding is no. Um, there's not anything outside of those three, except for we do have three applications in. One of them predates the discussion we're having here. And so that one, which is the one that um. I forget what his name was, uh, mentioned concern about. Um, that one can still go in under the existing.
Are you sure? Did you review that one legal?
We did, we looked over that. That it does predate, yeah.
Well, it was a different example that was here.
What's that?
It was a different legal.
Oh. Oh. Um, no, yeah, we, we did talk to Corlin about that. So the first one that came in, it came in before we started talking about this.
Termination, I figured in three acres, that we talked about.
Now, that was the one that the.
We talked about.
We talked about it having to be determined by the Thessers Office or something if they fit.
No, this one's, there was another, we, there was a, there's a line under the old code I saw that we had talked about that said that it had to be three acres at least.
Yes.
And yes, that one's.
And if it's not, then it wouldn't qualify. So, yeah, at least three acres.
Twenty-eight or something.
Oh, that even more reason why it wouldn't have qualified. Um, so I, my understanding, and I don't quote me on this because they're still reviewed ongoing. Uh, my understanding is that um it it may not qualify anyway. Um, and statute recommendation might be denied because of that, but again, it's not on the agenda yet. Um. Probably because there's been discussion with staff and staff is saying we're gonna recommend that, so there's probably. Uh, an attempt to try and find maybe more acreage or some ability to come into compliance before they commit by the commission.
So I think the only concern we have is with children's camp. And Commissioner Barber brought that up, and now that we've discussed that that can be eighteen year olds and younger.
Do you wanna go lower?
I don't know how we. He says the county, yeah, I'm sorry, I guess I. Didn't wanna make an issue. Does the county have other codes regarding overnight children's camps? I mean, how they're run, I would imagine. We've gotta have some sort of. Oversight or.
If a camp is allowed uh in certain zones as a conditional use, then we would just review it as a conditional use. And you know, like church camps and stuff like that, we've got a a variety of them up in the valley. I don't know by what authority they exist.
But they're all, those are usually, those are not for profits, those are separate, right? So they're.
It might be.
But what if we just changed it to children's classes?
Yeah. Or just. Just keep educational classes, or we could do day camp, yeah. Children's day camp.
They're very good with day camp, I am.
Just period, day camp, no children.
Yeah.
Yeah. Day camp, okay.
Yeah.
Would day camp, day camp to me makes me think of. I don't know. I guess, I guess you can't stay overnight, but otherwise kind of squatting or something, but okay. I got you.
But I, so I don't wanna ask too much. Does day camp differ than daycare? Cause I would imagine there could be a rules for day cares.
We do, and the state has regulations on daycare.
They have to comply to that, I would.
Um.
Or not, I don't.
Daycare may be different uh than day camp, daycare being meeting every day. Um, so maybe day camp needs to be defined as a day, uh, as opposed to multiple subs, multiple sequence uh days.
If you go to a day camp, then you go to the motel and stay, right? You come back.
The day camp the next day again and then go back and forth?
Yeah. I think some of the effort here is to distinguish between things that are potential for high impact.
Right.
And.
Okay, forgive me, I'm trying to get through this.
Yeah.
So I can get down to the spot that we need to, come on. It does not wanna play for all of me.
I'm giving this.
Okay, here we go. And there was one thing that I wanted to specifically a- address with you guys this world. Come on. Okay. Just day camp. Um, the highlighting that I, I have shown here under agricultural operation, no, sorry, that's not it. It's under the Farmland Assessment Act. Um, Kushner, Barbara, I understand a little bit better what your question was in our last meeting regarding eighty percent income. Um, I sat down with Corlin, we reviewed the Farmland Assessment Act, um, and I could see exactly where you were coming from on that. Um, the Farmland Assessment Act is a little complicated to read because it's a if this, then that, but except for these things. And you have to go back and forth and compare them all together. What if we just define what agriculture is, which we already do in our code? And say it's gotta be defined as agriculture, uh, as opposed to referring to the Farmland Assessment Act. Farmland Assessment Act is a tax act. Uh, I would feel a little more comfortable if we don't even try and refer to it. How do you guys feel about that?
So how would you define agriculture?
So, uh, our definition for agriculture is the raising of crops and tilling of soil. Um, that's the root, basically the root definition in our code for it. We do have other agricultural type of of definitions as well, like um. Uh, stables, um, uh, pasturing of animals, stuff like that, but the the base. Definition of agriculture is the raising of crop and the tilling of soil.
Is there a size?
Not under the base, so the size would still be required. Um, but we already show those sizes in our table.
Nine acres, I think, is that the minimum amount?
Um, unless it's those three smaller ones.
To get into the overnight stays.
Yep.
Nine acres and one cow, you're good.
Right, I just mean like if we change the definition.
It goes against skirts the agritourism intent.
Yeah, so.
You are lowering the bar and you're just basing it on acreage, then anybody can do it.
So I don't think this ordinance does that because we do say that your um agritourism operation cannot be any greater than X percent of your actively used farmland. The reason why I think the ordinance um currently refers to the Farmland Assessment Act because. The Farmland Assessment Act, number one, defines an acreage, right, a minimum acreage, but then it goes on to define what productive agricultural land is. We use a different term, but we do say um essential productive agricultural land. So. For example, if you've got nine acres and you have one cow, you know, on a pasture. Uh, that is a nine acre pasture or slightly less than that, whatever it may be, is that in productive agriculture? Um, that would be the question. And I don't know, under what we were talking about, what do you think, Corlin?
That gets kind of tricky because I. I don't know, I'm no agriculture expert, but I would have to find somebody who is to tell me if that's truly agriculture.
Can it be a cow, mean by acres, it's not realistic, I mean. Can the green, the green belt kind of define that you're making so much income, right? But you wanna step away from it.
Yeah, that's what, I'm hoping we can step away from it. Um. If there's no way to step away from it, then there's no way.
Example would be, let's say you have nine acres. And you dry farm, you bail pasture grass on seven acres, your house is on one and then you have a one acre. Tourism business. Are you really a farmer if you dry farm, bail seven acres?
That's a, that would be the question.
You don't even have to do it, you just call somebody up, they come and do it and they haul the bales with.
Yeah.
But you, you do qualify for green belt probably, I guess. Maybe, but are you, is that agriculture and does that make you an agritourism? Qualified.
So the ordinance requires that during a normal growing season, it is actively in agriculture and it does qualify active agriculture as. Um. I could probably find it, but it's basically using the land in a manner that advances the uh the agricultural operation. And so if somebody is looking to rotate crops or rotate. Um, animals so that a field can regrow, that field that's not being used but will be used at in that rotation would could still be counted. But someone who's uh dry farming for one crop and then doesn't do anything else for the rest of the year. This ordinance says it's gotta be an actively in agriculture for that growing season.
So you would say that example.
That example, you wouldn't, yeah, yeah, wouldn't qualify.
If you're just growing a crop of hay at any one time of year. Absolutely.
That's what, yeah, that's you have, that's what you have to do.
There's plenty of folks who do that now. So if you can't say that what would qualify, well, how else do you do it? Like, that's it.
What do you mean?
You can do that. Yeah, if it's dry farming, that's all you cut it is one time a year.
Can you, uh, can you graze on it?
Yeah, the thing is you can't, you can't live on, that's, that's the thing. So, so my point with that example is that a person who has nine acres, who dry farms. Seven, whatever, that's good, beneficial, but that's not your living. You cannot live on that. You can't be a professional farmer.
Right.
On a very small piece of land in this valley, doing that.
Right.
You have to have some other primary occupation or income or whatever.
I can name about three people that can live on their farms in the valley.
But but on, on their seven acres of, of pasture grass? No, of course they can on a bigger, a real farm, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying there's a difference between. Between being a real farmer and eking out a living that you primarily live on. And need some supplement versus doing something else for your income, growing down some fails of pasture grass. And then trying to run. Uh, an entertainment operation as well. That's where I think it just gets tricky. If you take out the. Farmland assessment part of it.
About the dairies that used to be in the valley when we moved there forty years ago. Uh, I can't remember, it was both. There are probably three big ones in our neighborhood. And every one of those guys had a second job. At the base or at D O or somewhere else, sheriff's department. Australia, rarely the fine farmer in the valley that didn't have a second job.
And the one like that near me was family owned and they had to support eight or nine kids. So, yeah, those kids had to go work somewhere. Because of there, you know, too many kids on one dairy just didn't work. So sure, but what I'm saying is today. There's plenty of small plots of land, nine, ten, twelve acres, that people bail. But that's not what they do, they're not farmers, they just bail it. And so you're opening the door, if you take the Farmland Assessment Act out of it. To people who then will take an acre or two and create an entertainment business. Or leverage some, you know, something else under the banner of farmland assessment. When they're really not complying with, if you read the first paragraph there, what it says.
Yeah.
Or.
Just, just, I'm a farmer, that's my job, and I have to get another. Source of income, but I, I classify myself as a farmer, but I can't support, so I gotta go. Do a real job.
And that's what.
But I can do agriculture and maybe I don't have the ability to do it.
As I understand the Farmland Assessment Act, didn't it require five acres and fifty percent of your income coming?
What can we do both require the financial and that?
I think.
The Farmland Act just says, if I'm wrong, tell me. You gotta have five acres minimum and the production of that five acres is gonna be some percentage of the typical production for them a acre.
That's right.
Essentially, yes.
Thirty percent or something like that.
It has two main requirements and you pulled up ones, you printed one section here, I gotta get to the other section. Uh. I will want, um, the first requirement is the acreage requirement here under. Very last thing to talk did is under one, A. The general requirement is at least five contiguous acres, but there are a couple of exceptions to that. And the second requirement is in one B, which is where it says is actively devoted to agricultural use and. That is defined as meaning that it produces in excess of fifty percent. Of the average agricultural production per acre.
Fifty percent.
It has to mean the fifty percent of the average agricultural production per acre, which number two here. You determine that based on Utah agricultural statistics or Utah State University's current crop budgets or some other exception. In the acreage and then there's the average, and it's half of what typically they could.
Fifty percent.
At least half.
That's right.
There's a bunch of exceptions in there for rotating crop or. Bad water, weather, stuff like that. There are some exceptions and there's, there's an exception for. The county commission, alright, so the county board of equalization or the tax commission may grant a waiver, may, they don't have to. But they may grant a waiver of the acreage limitation. If the owner appeals and proves that eighty percent or more of the owner's income. Is derived from agricultural products produced on the property in question. So in theory, somebody can have two acres. And they could appeal the county commission.
Eighty percent of their income is off that two acres.
Yeah, if they could prove that. That, it doesn't say they do, so they may. So there are all kinds of assumptions. We have basically acreage and production. One of the benefits of people being in Greenbelt is. They can maintain the land because the taxes are lower and it remains open space. Right? So it's kind of a, it's a good thing, a good thing, cause it produces the open.
That causes people to dry farm and bail they and do all those good things that you want to be done. So now we're talking about somebody who has nine acres, taking it a step further and. My only concern is that, you know, in the public interest, like we've heard. In these areas where people start doing things in smaller areas, and even nine acres could be small. That the neighbors could have a concern legitimately, if this isn't a real plot.
Right.
You know, it probably isn't. And they're trying to get away with overnight or parties or whatever. You know, giant armada table dinners. And I can tell you, there are examples of very wealthy people who live in the valley. They don't live in the valley, own land, live in Salt Lake or wherever, and I know they want to run enterprises.
Right.
On their property and hire people to run enterprises and they're looking for loopholes to do it. I know that exists. And when you start letting them do it like this, like if we did. The community isn't, you know, maybe some people will go and like it, but the neighbors probably aren't. And they're going to create all the. Potential for nuisances that would then tries to deal with.
What, what are the language that you tied this to the agricultural use on the property?
Um, I'll, I can show you where that language is. Um, uh, give me just a second, I've got, um, let me offer a potential solution here. Uh, the, the problem that I have is number one, tying this to a tax code, number two, tying it to state code where. The legislature can change the state code and that automatically changes county code. It, I think it'd be more beneficial if we can identify what it is about this uh Farmland Assessment Act. Or, yeah, whatever it is, um, that we like for those qualifications and we just lift it and plug it into our code. And so maybe I would suggest, uh, as we look. As we're looking at this, we've got, um. Like Corlin said, A is not less than five contiguous acres, so maybe we say A is not less than three contiguous acres.
I like, I mean, I personally like the matrix that now exists. Okay, so the suggestions from the last meeting where if you have a little piece of property, you can still do certain things, you just can't be running weddings and.
Right.
Your villages.
I would be keeping that matrix.
That's all good, I think.
Yeah.
Now the only question is how do you determine what is and isn't a legitimate agricultural business that is seeking to supplement itself?
So my suggestion would be, we say not less than three acres. Um, but they still have to meet those minimum acreage requirements uh based on the specific type of agriculture agritourism they wanna do. So not less than three acres and, cause this is part A has an and and is actively devoted to agricultural use. And has been actively devoted to for agricultural use for at least two successive years preceding the tax year. Which that actually increases. We were saying one successive year in our code, we could say two. And then we define what actively devoted is based on what the state has defined that as, which would be at you are earning at least fifty percent of whatever the average is for that type of. So, sorry, producing at least fifty percent uh based on the type of uh crop as defined by Utah State University or Utah Agricultural Statistics or other acceptable standards of agricultural production. This uh designated by the commission by rule, nevermind, we just ignore that last one. So it's either Utah Agricultural Statistics or Utah State University.
I don't mean to be funny, but farm-based incomes goes through cycles and it's often unpredictable and uncontrollable. So are we, are we basing that off of any given year that we look at there?
Yes, this, this is based on current production levels reported in the uh current publication of the Utah Agricultural.
So if one year I decide to grow potatoes and potatoes go through the worst year ever and I have to supplement that through my agritourism tourism side hustle. And it tips the scale over fifty percent, I'm out, I lose my CUP.
Uh, potentially.
The farmland assessment act has got
Bunch of exceptions.
For to address a situation like that.
I think we do it next, why don't we just both say the farmland assessment and we say agritourism and to buy agriculture?
Should we say, um?
Cause if the state changes it to make it easier.
Right.
Or harder. It's kind of a win in both scenarios.
Yeah.
It's like, well, it's a win for freedom because the state did it, but the chances of that happening, you and I both know.
Right.
Fairly so.
The farmland assessment act is now beliefs down to an acre. Or less.
Uh, sorry, farmland assessment act stays at five, but there is a new act, Urban Farming Act, yeah.
Which is
Down to an acre.
Is it one?
One acre, I believe.
Yeah, does it have to be within a city since it's called urban?
I don't think so. I haven't, we haven't dug, dug deep into it. Um, I just got the high level uh points from legislative.
That would only be in that minimal category anyway, where you can only do a few things.
Right, well, right now we're only referring to the farmland assessment act, not the urban agriculture act. So what if we do refer to the create our standards, which are a simplified version of the farmland assessment act. Or as other might, as otherwise might be designated by the farmland assessment. And so we have an easier standard and an or, so if ours doesn't cast a
Exception.
Yeah, if ours doesn't cast a, a white enough umbrella, they can go through this.
Be, you qualify, you are participating in the Greenbelt. Or you meet the standards of the Greenbelt, even if you're not part of their tax thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay. I'll bring that to you guys in the next minute.
Well, but you, you do need to specify that fifty percent of.
Yeah, so that'll go in there as our base standard, um, and then everything else would fall back to whatever the farmland assessment act.
And in that standard, we've been putting a cushion for their weird years because they have.
We say forty-five percent, I mean, we can go less than fifty. Okay. I like that.
On page twenty-nine of forty-one. I'd like to see the A's shift one column over for camping and lodging house.
Okay, let's see. Camping, so you'd like to see this one be an N? And?
On which one?
The top two and the ones on lodging house. So all of them just shift one N over.
In, including the R, RV area? Okay, so that N would be, or sorry, that A would be an N as well, okay?
Okay, like that? Yep.
And then you say comp, oh, lodging house. And and, 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 okay. I like it.
Any objection?
Back on that question I asked you a minute ago. I'm looking under educational classes, because this is language that I was referring to. That yes, agricultural economical components related to an agricultural product produced on site. Isn't, isn't that the whole thing? If you're a tidier agriculture, though, it's agritourism, but the agritourism used has to relate to the specific product you're producing on site.
Yeah, uh, in fact, we can, we do say that a few different times, and so we could probably strike this.
I mean, that, that's a limit I think you're looking for.
You can't just have nine acres and you cut, uh, I irrigated, you cut, one cutting off it. And you put a cow or somewhere and you say, oh, okay, now we can have a hotel. No, it's got to be related to uh, the hay crop.
Yes.
And the cow.
Yes, and we do, we do have that uh written into uh the, the qualifications above. Um, I, I made an effort to spell it out a little bit differently here for educational classes.
Yeah.
Just to reference.
That was the concept I was trying to refer to.
Yeah.
So it's not a wide open door, I think, it's.
I wouldn't, I also wouldn't mind moving, putting an A where the N is for bakery or cafe, so making it so that you don't have to have as much for the bakery or cafe.
Starts with a B, B for bakery or cafe.
It's the same page.
Oh, is it food?
Basically saying if you wanted to have a bakery or cafe.
Way that one to the left?
Yeah, one A to the left.
So the other two you wanted to move to the right and this one you wanted to move to the left. Where is help, oh, I see. Okay, so in the nine acre box, you could have
I mean picturing you're, I mean, I'm not totally opposed to the smaller, I mean, I just idea of like we grow flour on our land, we sell bread.
Anyone heard of wheat without?
I did this, sure.
He wants to sell that too.
I just gotta figure out how to make it.
You guys have any objections to that? I, I'm not saying the restaurant or anything.
No, I think you. So you're saying, you know, of course, we don't use these definitions garden and small anymore, right?
We still use.
We use
They use them.
Garden. Garden and small are still used, the one that is taken out of the standard.
I agree.
And that's not, in the disregard of the word family, it's just the way it was designated.
Well, we know how you feel about families.
Food concession is gonna be a should be, this is saying we need at least ten acres, nine acres. This is nine to twenty, right? What this is saying, well, this one.
Um, okay, that's good, bakery or cafe. Put that in the small.
I think that's not totally unreasonable.
And what is the other one?
I don't have to change that one. Does anybody else? Why don't we not allow an agricultural product store on something between three and nine?
Monster you're doing?
Well, no, that's bigger than that. Bigger, but I mean, I'm, I mean, I guess I'm seeing this as like, if you are doing one of these small operations. You shouldn't, I mean, I don't know why you couldn't have a store at your house around here, three to ninety acres. Leafy greens. And I've got the trailer set up. They can have a little store.
I don't know why you need to get an, an agricultural exemption for that though, because I imagine you can sell farm, can you sell? Farm raised, if you're in a maybe three, then can you sell your crop right from the, already?
Yeah, um, it wholesale, you couldn't have a retail operation on site.
That doesn't make whole life wholesale.
So, um.
You can't put out a stand that says I can sell corn. Yeah, let's, let's change that to an A then, in my opinion. If it's not allowed, you should be allowed. If I grew corn on five acres and I, that's, that's a thing, I can't sell corn.
That's a farm stand. I think, doesn't the county have a different code for that?
Uh, farm stand, yes, we do.
Is it? Yeah.
Yeah, and you could get, I think a farm stand would allow, oh, sorry, I didn't understand that question, uh, that's out of the question. I think a farm stand is a permitted use in uh agricultural areas, and so I don't even think we would do.
So then we don't even really need an agricultural product store in this.
No, this would be if it's associated with an agritourism operation.
So that's what I ask, what McFarland Farms, are they a farm stand? Or are they agritourism? That would be interesting to know which they were.
Yeah.
And it'd be interesting to know what the one that was in the newspaper on five hundred south is also.
What they are, yeah. Okay, well, let me, let me see if I can do a little bit of sleuthing and figure out what either of them are. I know, I know the McFarland, so if they don't have uh agritourism permit, I'll encourage them to come and apply so that
More of a farm stand, given what they're doing.
And we have to go out and have a look, but yeah, farm stand in our code doesn't have like um maximum area or a maximum square footage that your farm stand is. And so there's probably quite a bit they can do.
Agricultural Arts Center.
Yeah. I do think we have a definition for it, but.
Ever been to the Corn Palace in South Dakota?
And why don't we need nine acres for that?
You tell me, that's one that, uh, I was a little confused about, an agricultural arts. Area.
On the first page, like. Yeah, yeah, you're good, thank you.
We'll behave ourselves, okay?
We'll be quick, we're gonna wrap this up, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I, I'm gonna clarify, I think that should be allowed at Art Center, I don't want a district, I mean, you got, I look at the lady down the street for me, that she sells art at her house. If somebody has a desire to do this, also, I don't know why we should.
It might be a home occupation though.
They could do it through home occupation, but if we can make it through agricultural, uh, agritourism, then why not do that as well? Let's see, I'm trying to find the definition, they're with me.
Yeah. We're now basically down here. Just wanna go over a couple of these.
And it's, uh.
Agricultural Arts Center. The term means a facility designed for the purpose of offering public education, enjoyment and enlightenment, whatever that means. Through artistic expression and or a translation of concepts related to art. Art history and art theory. In a conducive agricultural setting, it acts as a venue for the community to experience, appreciate and consume art in a variety of forms, including but not limited to visual or media art, literature, music, theater, film or dance. An agricultural arts center does not provide accommodation for overnight lodging. However, it may serve meals when served to event participants or guests. I don't know that I see how that pertains to agriculture, but if you wanna have it in.
You don't think we should go
Because they're having events and they're having things over there.
Sounds good. But I'm just, everything else I'm good.
How about the, uh, U Pick? I don't know why you, I mean.
Where's that at?
It's, uh, twenty-eight page, twenty-eight, but.
That's what I was asking, is you pick farm stand or forest? Auto repair place. Let's pick apart.
Twenty-eight, it's agritourism, you pick corporation. And I'm thinking of you guys that have small orchards. And they say, hey, come over, you can pick a bushel for five bucks.
But they can do that not through agritourism, but they can do it through a farm stand.
And do you pick?
Yeah. I think so, right?
I don't know why you, you put a no for small for you pick.
You pick, oh, under small. Um, it's a good question. A farm stand would be, you come to my stand and you buy the fruit that I'm selling at the stand. Um, going into the property and harvesting as a U Pick operation might be something different. Go, allow them smaller?
I mean, if there's not a way to allow it, you should definitely.
The, the other one is apiary. I don't see why you have to have ten hives or twenty hives or and you make it small.
Uh, could that be one of those easy gates, you could buy some hives, somebody manages them for you and then you throw up your yurts.
No. You, you can't do, you're, you can't do overnight.
Oh, you're still, you're talking about small.
I'm just saying.
Can you do?
I put this on a small.
Small.
Good, small size?
Yeah. I don't know, I'm a real bit firm that way, because all you need for, I mean, you, you'd have a devote this much of your property to a few hives. It benefits the, does the surrounding people, it pollinates everything. And it's a little thing to have your kids work on. Why not?
Did it, do you wanna restrict it to a ten hive minimum?
No.
So two hives per acre, so shall have no less than two hives per acre?
I don't know, I, I'm a little bit off on that one, and I don't know, I don't know enough about bees, but there's.
Come on over, I'll take you.
Do you have a hive operation? Well, what happens if I'm a three acre operation, I, I start this for, I don't know why. This, tell me again what does this mean? Cause it doesn't mean, because they can already do an apiary.
Again.
Uh, this is just saying, I can sell.
Yeah, it actually, well. Yeah, so apiary is listed use allowed in the agricultural zones. I don't even know that you need to even list it here.
So this doesn't make any sense.
Still sell your honey as a farm stand.
Yeah, you can have agritourism operation and you can have an apiary as part of your agricultural operation and the, neither of the two need to, need to be.
Apiary. The reason that here qualifies as agritourism, then you can have your day camp, come over and work the bees.
Yes, and I don't know that we even need to list it here because apiary is already um, uh, under agriculture in the agricultural zones and the F B three zone. And so as long as that is your agricultural operation, you probably still qualify. However, what it does say here, that is a little different, is it's a per acre per hive uh minimum, right? That's how we define how much acreage is necessary to qualify it as an agritourism operation. So that, there's a little bit of a difference there, does that make sense, what I just said?
Well, if you say two per acre, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Twenty or ten or even, just two per acre.
Okay.
The only thing about that is I'm just concerned because bees are one of those things where you can hire people to run your hive operation. And if you're on a bigger property, I would just wanna be careful you're not using that to open the gate. Do a whole different thing when you're not even really involved. But that's, but that's, could be separate, yeah. But bees are one of those things where you can have a lot of highs, but you don't even touch it.
This is actually supposed to, this is supposed to be, I think some of this is a little off my, I mean. Thinking about this, maybe it's just getting late. But like seasonal amusement such as haunted house, corn maze, haystack slide, is what this chart's supposed to have and apiary is not really what this is supposed to have. Cause it's like, now we're telling people what they can do with their farm. Not, which is what you're doing in an agricultural, agritourism anyway, but we've kind of already said, hey, you can do a farm.
I, I agree, we haven't listed in this uh raising of cattle or crop or anything like that, so I don't know that the word apiary even belongs in here unless you guys want to keep the standard regarding. So I don't know that the word apiary even belongs in here, unless you guys want to keep the standard regarding acreage per hive. Uh, otherwise, if somebody comes in, has twenty hives on one acre of land, are they?
I think it goes back to that, you know, other language we were talking about, they're dating.
This is what is agricultural.
Right.
Bees are agriculture, they, at a certain level.
Yeah.
One, but I don't think they have to be called out, or just like every other animal. Probably doesn't have to be called a hive.
Right, uh, when we're trying to determine their productive agricultural acreage. Let's say they have twenty hives and all the hives are in close proximity to each other.
Cause they usually are.
Right, so on less than an acre at least, are we going to allow them to say that they're a nine acre? Or a fifteen acre or whatever it is?
I don't know enough about the economics, but yeah, we don't have any of that, or how you tell, is there like, man, don't it's really doing it, or just hiring? Run it if they own the.
Right. Yeah, to get property. Right.
They can. I shouldn't, that's not what this is, is it? Is that some, is this just defining that you're an apiary, apiary? Is that why this is here? Why is this here?
I don't.
Do we need a separate line that defines an apiary? Maybe we do. It's cause, cause this, if I'm raising hay, I shouldn't need permission to be in a bee.
Agreed.
Um, so we should take this out, or put it, and if we needed a limitation of how much they can have, which. I don't know what that would be, and I'm not sure, we should set those limitations. But.
Our current code has already set it.
Then let's just take this out.
Uh, no, sorry, the current agricultural, sorry, agritourism code has already set what that minimum acreage is per hive. Um, and that's what you see.
And why do I need that for agriculture? I only need that if I'm trying to, if I'm trying to be in agritourism.
Yes.
So. This is in the wrong spot.
Yeah, so take it out.
I agree with you, the one thing that it does right now, which we may wanna plug into another part of the agritourism. Uh, ordinance is it defines how many acres you need to have in order to qualify as agritourism.
Yeah.
Right, cause as Commissioner Bark and our, sorry, Barbara and I were just talking, you have twenty hives on an acre.
Yeah.
Is, is that one acre?
This out.
You can have a hundred hives.
Right.
We need to move this out, and we need to say that you have to have a hundred hives or something.
No, you don't.
Why qualify for agritourism?
Okay, good, that's, and it doesn't mean.
Yeah, you need everything you want, but in order to be like, I'm an actual bee farmer that does, that wants to have lodging, I have to have.
Something, okay, now you're up into the nine acres.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
And if you're a bee farmer.
That's what I mean, is have, we wanna say that is, hey, like, if you're a bee farmer, you still have to have this many acres.
So if I'm, if I'm raising. I got you. For money, how much money do I generate annually per hive?
Some will make a lot.
We sell. The guys that are in it make money. And they follow their. And you want. And you want to monetize.
I want them to require.
You can get, uh, I got one more hive and I'm gonna go take the honey off it. Next Wednesday, and I've got ninety pounds of honey.
Ninety pounds.
So that's.
If you're looking to get rid of some of your favorite people.
What's the net? Net five of nine. How much? Two hundred dollars.
The hard thing is, is some of these guys don't use, don't do honey at all.
No, I know.
They don't.
And if you have somebody else can do the honey, it benefits everybody, because you got the bees in the neighborhood.
Is there any other ones you wanted to discuss before we go?
Somewhere else in here. Charlie, you've got required that for agritourism to have ten, ten hives minimum. I think we talked about that last week.
We did.
Instead of just. Eliminate ten hives.
At least two per acre, is that a fair deal and just call good?
Yeah.
Two per acre.
So, and and if this is allowed on a small one acre deal. Apiary makes N and A in the garden category.
Mm-hmm.
And you can have two per acre.
Okay. I think that works.
Allowing you to do agricultural, agritourism operations.
So you're gonna have a minimum of six.
Apiary. Activity, you may have four acres, that doesn't mean you have to have eight beehives, you just have to have. I don't know why you put a minimum requirement. How many, how many beehives would you need to be serious about it, or if it's just a hobby? Well. Uh, if you're serious about it, you got hundreds of them.
Hundreds, okay.
Or you have twenty or thirty so that you can rent them out to somebody to take them to California.
Cause I guess the question is, what, where do you draw the line that would say, that would make it okay? For you, like, in your mind, what makes it okay that you're an apiarist? And you are okay to have lodging people coming?
No, no, lodging.
That's what I mean, though, that's, that's what we're talking about.
That's the question.
Have bees.
Of an apiarist, cause you can already have.
How is lodging related to the bees?
Because I, I have, I have one stack of bees.
You have a big enough piece of property that would allow lodging, if you qualify for agritourism, then you wanna use bees as your qualifier.
Yeah.
Honorable, the lodging has to be somehow related to the apiary business.
Yeah, you're gonna.
Is that our name there?
It's in there.
Yeah, so you're gonna teach them about bees, so how many, you have nine acres. And you have to prove that you're truly a bee farmer, truly teaching people about bees, and you know, you're, you're, you're a professional bee. Person, how many hives does that require? To be a professional bee person? People do bees for a little extra income.
But the question is, so like, so how do, so if I, if I have twenty acres, right? And I wanna set up. But they're not letting me, but I could go, okay, I can get lots of bees and say that I'm a, I'm an agricultural operation. I'm gonna teach them about bees, but all I do is slide a piece of paper into the packet, and I teach them about bees while they stay the night. And I serve them, how do we, how do we mitigate that risk? But also encourage someone to be able to do a bee operation if they want to, that's the question.
Okay. Well, and you're saying that the nexus of the operation is you put a piece of paper in there that says, here's a bee.
Yeah.
Or you serve lodging, or you serve under your honey for breakfast, or you.
Yeah.
Now, they wanna ask you a question, and you'll answer.
I mean, that, that's, that's first of all, you could do.
The nine acres has to be devoted to agri. In active production, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the question, cause if your active production is beekeeping. And you can put a hundred hives on an acre of land, what are you doing with the rest of your eight acres? Are you?
I mean.
Farming it in another way?
You drive down trappers into the valley, look off to the right. I don't know who's running that farm over there, there are probably fifty hives down there. You look on the Jensen farm, as you come up the canyon, and you look out there, and somebody has got a bunch of hives. That's what they do.
So there's no reason every year, how do we, and people bring them on, how do we prevent? That loophole and still encourage.
Bees are funny, because you could put a hundred hives in here.
Yeah.
But you gotta be making at least fifty percent of your income yearly from agricultural use, so if you've got fifty bees.
Sorry, I, I misinformed them in the beginning, it's fifty percent of the um average uh production. Uh, you have to be make, you have to be producing fifty percent of the average production.
Which you could say, I'm, you know, average in the area is whatever one beehive makes, so it's like.
Could you say? Could you just simply say at this point, bees alone don't qualify you for lodging?
The weddings. Yeah, places that are active.
Okay, say, no matter how, did you hear that?
Sorry.
Just say, no matter what your property size is, bees alone don't qualify you for lodging, weddings.
There you go.
Large venue.
Yeah, I like.
Operations. Even do education and.
Like, so all it means is bees is not a way to. Agritourism, which is.
But we're saying have the biggest agritourism.
Yeah.
Banks.
The where class.
Yeah.
So basically, what you put there in a smaller. What he put there in a separate line, pulls out of there.
So, so the small guy can do his thing.
Yep.
And have his little classes, yep. But the hotel guy can't say, oh, I see the beehive over there, I got.
That helps, that solves the problem. Do you hear that, Charlie?
Yeah, so. I'll figure out how to do this, but uh, just a couple of notes here, so if. Apiary, sorry, um, cannot qualify for lodging. Uh.
Amusements.
Amusement.
Weddings, anything but those child camp, the child, the children camp, that you, their day camp, that you, you know, how we tried to separate them.
Uh-huh.
They qualify for the lesser, not the upper.
Okay.
The idea.
Yeah, the interesting thing about bees is, the actual hive takes up this much space, and just. Okay, so those bees will go for miles. Hey, anything else?
So, thank you guys.
I see, and your notes up there eliminate that you gotta have two A hives per acre, there's no reason for that.
Yeah, we're getting rid of that, requiring them.
Okay.
Together, right?
Yeah.
Cause we're saying that.
I think it's a great shirt.
I think you're sure.
Hey, thank you.
You should have seen me changing it on the way in, though.
You keep a, you keep a clean one in spare in the truck, that's good.
Sorry, one more time.
Lines five, five.
Good looking shirt.
Uh-huh.
Requires.
I'll, I'll make sure I address that too, okay.
Don't be too upset at me. See you later, Ben.
Hey, good to see you, thanks, guys.
I'll tell you how.